I'm so happy today to have Max Steele back here again. Thanks for coming, Max. We're gonna talk about the whole year 2025 for Portland.
Yeah.
Multnomah County a little bit. But you know, I was thinking today, you have to be my, my most frequent guest on the show.
Yeah, I think so.
And it's a lot of fun. I always enjoy talking to you. It's really hard to find people who are nerdy as us about this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Political, the Portland political world. And yeah, we've been kicking around this idea of doing more of this, like on a sideshow kind of thing. We did a live a couple of weeks ago, so.
Sure.
I don't know. Stay tuned for that. It's in the works maybe, but um, uh, but yeah, we're here to talk about the year 2025 for Portland City Council. We're gonna go over some highlights, some lowlights. We're gonna do some letter grading. We're, I'm not doing the ranking thing exactly, but it's similar to that. It's similar.
Yeah, I think the ranking is done.
Cause rankings don't really shift around too much, at least this.
At this point, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know where we stand on, yeah.
So, but yeah, we'll do some letter grades. Uh, Santa is gonna give some gifts out to some of these city councilors, all of them, I think. And yeah, we're gonna also talk about next year and do some forecasting for 2026.
Sure.
Uh, so yeah, that's what's in store. I was just gonna say real quick, we're gonna start with like going through the year, some notable events. But I did wanna give, this is just my backdrop and I'm curious like what you think is your backdrop, I guess, but I, I'm just so always focused on the economy, the local economy. And I was just gonna start it off with like, cause this employment data just came out from Oregon Employment Department, uh, probably a month ago or two or three weeks ago. And I just found it fascinating that Multnomah County has had 10 months of negative employment. And when you, I'll put the graph up here, but when you look at Clackamas and these other counties, they're the opposite. So.
Yeah.
I just wanted to set that scene of like, to me, that's kinda where Portland's at as far as like a city is like, we're still kinda struggling with that stuff and. Yeah, we can get into it later and we talk about the mayor, but I do think there's progress as far as like the mayor, what he's trying to do.
Sure.
Uh, but yeah, let's um, let's kick it off with uh, some notable events. We'll just kinda try to go chronologically.
Yeah.
There's so many things probably we could talk about in here, but is there anything off the top of your head you wanna start off with for 2025?
I mean, off the top of my head for 2025, the things that we, especially things that we haven't already covered.
Or, or, or covered, yeah.
Or that we have. I mean, this is, so you said your backdrop is like the economy. My backdrop is, is this like fractured reality, right? Cause a lot of the issues I think we're gonna get into really boil down to, you mentioned Keith Wilson's success, right? Keith Wilson, yeah, I mean, we could debate his success. There are people that don't think he's doing a great job, people that think he's doing a great job, but that's like a debate that's happening in reality. You're looking at things Keith Wilson's administration is really doing, and then you're grading them based on how you feel about them. And then there's this other reality which like half of our city council is living in, which is this heightened exaggerated reality. And a lot of these events, a lot of these fights, the, the homeless uh, camp cleanup fight, the, any of the Israel Palestine stuff, this is happening in this weird sphere where like big exaggerated language is getting used. So to me, like my backdrop going into the next year is like, who are the local politicians who are living in the same reality that I occupy? Like, again.
Yeah, I remember you take, you have this big thing about two Portlands, right? Is that kinda what you mean?
A little bit, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's just, there's a Portland where like we're evil. There's a Portland that we're like, oh, there might be finally a road to justice and goodness and light and truth. If only we could get the horrible monster Keith Wilson out, just like all the horrible monsters before him, and maybe burn the whole system down and build finally the first good American city. It's like this ridiculous, I don't know, like stoned college students in like debating in a dorm room level of seriousness? And then over here, we've got Keith Wilson's plan to end unsheltered homelessness, which we could have a real meat and potatoes debate and discussion about. Because it exists, like, we're talking in reality.
Yeah, and it's not so, um, I don't know, the contrast isn't so black and white. I think, yeah, like a lot of the younger members of the council probably want, like you said, to be this kind of high friction debate about it where it's really like, cause you know, I mean, talk about the mayor later a little bit, but I'll say that, you know, he, I think it's obviously way more nuanced and like, there are a lot of areas where he's made progress and obviously his team is working hard to, you know, stick to these goals they've set out for themselves.
Yeah.
And so it's like, I don't know, I don't think that if you are living in like a, a true reality, I don't think you can just say, well, it's a flat out failure. Like, uh, so I don't know, but.
Or, yeah, I, I, I mean, even if we go back to the budget, so we go back to the first, the first big, big fight. You know what? Let's go back to day one.
Yeah.
The president.
The council president election, yeah.
The choice of council president.
That was pretty contentious, yeah.
That was wild. Olivia Clark is put forward, Candace Avalos is put forward. There isn't a reality in which Candace Avalos is a good choice for president of the council. I mean, there's no, no one's serious.
Yeah.
Too young, too inexperienced, too silly.
Too divisive.
Too divisive, ridic- there are a bunch of people in that room, again, agree or disagree, who could have been president. Olivia Clark's put forward, makes sense. Alana Pertle-Ginnis put forward, makes sense.
Even, even Steve, I think would, you know.
Steve, Loretta, Dan, there are many people in that room that could do that job well, and I think we all know that they could. And then there's Candace Avalos. And I'm like, I'm sorry, there's just no way you might as well put forward Angelita.
As far as a balanced voice, those are not balanced voices.
But they drew up battle lines on that. Hey, you know, they were split for over an hour.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how many, it was like 10 rounds of voting or something?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was well over a dozen rounds. It was ridiculous. But that was the first hill they chose to die on was a ridiculous hill. It wasn't.
That's a good point, cause I didn't even write that. I forgot about that first election on there and uh, you know, I, I'm just guessing, but I would think after the November election, they would have been thinking about that and planning that stuff for at least a month and thinking about what we're, how are we gonna vote? What are we gonna, who are we gonna put up?
I'm sure they did. I think that the thing that voters have to remember about this council is because there is a block of six and six individuals, that six person block, sorry, Angelita, she claims they're not that powerful, there's, she, you know, oh, they could do stuff too.
Yeah, she tried to paint it as a minority, but it's not.
Basically, no, they are.
At least half the group.
It's at least half, but it's, but that's it. It's half the group all the time. They almost always vote together as a block, so they only ever need to swing one person. So I think they did come out of the gate swinging really hard going, we're gonna prove something really big. We're gonna put Candace Avalos as president. We're gonna flex so hard. Day one, day one was a contentious nonsense fight to put forward a candidate who was completely unqualified for the position. I think to prove, to prove they could, to just be like, it's a new day, baby, and we're just gonna do what we wanna do.
Like a flex, as you're saying.
Yeah, and luckily, everybody else, and it was clear if you watched that debate, all the other councilors were like, hey man, we'll vote for Olivia or Alana, or like.
Who else you got?
Dee, we're like, it's not gonna be Candace, like damn it, it's not gonna be Candace Avalos. And that was really, really clear. And the DSA, I mean, the peacock, you know, not named yet, but the peacock locked in and they were like, it's gonna be, finally Mitch Green caved because it was getting embarrassing and I think he's just smart enough to know just optically how horrible that was. Just, just, just a train wreck of like, oh cool, we're deadlocked day one. You've already proven that the new model doesn't work. You know, they, they established the mayor didn't have a tiebreaker because it was not a matter pertaining to operation of the city, blah, blah, blah. And they just, yeah, so the first moment, the first, right, yes, and this is completely indicative of everything that comes after, the budget fight, right? The budget fight is, are we gonna mostly go along with Keith Wilson's proposed budget and follow this model where there's a council, but there's a, there's experts, the city has experts uh, for a reason. They have budget officers, they have a city manager, which we'll get to, they had, like, are we gonna go with that recommendation? Knowing that that's not a random recommendation, that's a, that's a well put together, tightly organized package. Or are we gonna decide that we're the experts and we should run things? And you did see that in the budget process. You saw the non-peacocks, who are not a voting block, by the way.
So officially, yeah. Did she call them that or something?
I mean, she, yeah, like this, they all have, I, again, I'll throw.
She calls them the moderate block or something?
Yeah, or like she's spoken about the two different blocks on council before. A lot of, a lot of reporters have, only Maya Vicklins-Harris has gotten that right. You know, by showing all the data and saying, there are not two blocks on that council. There's a block and there's six individuals. But that's dangerous because again, you're always one swing vote away from any decision. And the reverse of that is that the peacock can block anything. They are capable of blocking every single thing they wanna block. If they don't want something getting through, it's not getting through.
Yeah.
So if you're looking at your Dan Ryans, if you're looking at your even Steve Novix and going, why haven't they done more stuff? It's like, well.
Yeah, it's a real uphill battle.
There's a party of no. There's absolutely, you know.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, maybe it's like the optimist in me too, but especially with budget season, I look at that and I it, it's like impressive in the other direction sometimes to me of like, well, that, that is a, that is a firm block that they have, but like, they didn't really accomplish a lot as far as what they're trying to do with the budget.
Oh, no.
And I think the overall sentiment was kinda like, you know, everyone's just like, let's give the mayor's kind of budget a chance here. Like this is like three months into the, into everyone's term. And yeah, I could just see, you know, in the smoky backrooms of Angelita's policy uh, crafting, like, they just wanted to come out of the gate hard, like with both of these things, the council president and the budget and just like, we're gonna throw everything at this and see what's gonna stick. And after that, like I was saying, it's just kind of impressive after that budget that not a lot did, you know?
Yeah, they haven't succeeded at much.
But they, but it was, you know, like, I agree with what you're saying. It's like, there's a lot of flexing right out of the gate.
Yeah. I mean, this has been a fight since day one. They have made it very, very clear. Jamie Dunphy the other day said that he was going on one of his unhinged rants and ends it with like, and let's just vote on this thing and get on to the next fight. And he specifically said fight, that wasn't a flub, that wasn't an accidental word choice. The peacock is, every hill is a fight.
Right. It's a very aggressive, like friction based kinda thing.
At a time when we so badly just need, I would, I would rather have a group of 12 people that I mostly kinda disliked, but at least they were like all negotiating toward. This doesn't feel like that. This, this feels like six people and the mayor fighting six people. And that's why all of these council sessions go on for like eight, nine, 10 hours. And the DSA shows up with their 40 weird psychopaths and then you have to get like.
Same people, yeah.
And then you have to get 40 or 50 like business owners and immigrants and like preachers and stuff to come in and form out the other, so that the public testimony is balanced and it's just so much energy and so much time and so much money. Like, at a time when we really, really, really need just like a cohesive direction, which I feel like Portlanders voted for by electing Keith Wilson. Again, agree with him or disagree with him. Dude won by a wide margin.
Yeah. A pretty firm mandate, I think, yeah.
And people keep showing up to support what he's doing, cause it's, it's working better than the thing we were doing before.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure. Yeah, no, it's, it is really interesting, cause I was thinking like it has throughout 2025, things have just gotten, I would say, people love the word progressive here, but progressively uh, more aggressive and more, like the knives just kept come out. Um, and I was surprised, like, you know, Keith, I think finally took a stand with this, you know, I, I keep calling it Portland Solutions, but uh, the DSA would say, we're gonna try to end sweeps, which.
It's the impact reduction.
Impact reduction, IRP, IRP. You know, and I always tell people like, these are programs that as they do this, it's kinda goes along with Keith's, he would probably say continuum of care of like, while we do this, we're trying to help the city and also offer services to the people that they're engaging with. To what degree they can, and he's opened up a lot of shelters and all this, but anyway, I think that was kind of the boiling point for him of like, before that, it was pretty um, amicable. It was, it seemed like fairly friendly. Sometimes there were heated moments like during the budget and whatnot.
Yeah.
But up until that moment, it was like, okay, there, we're on a crash course for just total aggression and like constant friction.
Yeah, yeah, Ke- Keith Wilson.
But that was a flex, I think, for him too of like.
Yes.
He's like, this is the mandate that I earned and like, this is the plan, and if you guys aren't along with the plan, guess what happens? And we saw what happens. People don't even show up to vote because they're like, this is ridiculous. Like, what are you doing?
So, yeah, I mean, I've got whatever, I've got criticisms of Keith Wilson, but this is one of those weird moments where this is a, this is a make or break moment for a mayor, especially in Portland. Portland loves to hate our mayor. We love to hate our mayor. We need a very strong mayor. We need a Vera Katz. We need somebody who has a plan, who sells the plan on the campaign, who takes office, executes the plan. And then if you accuse them of something they are not doing, so in the case of Keith Wilson, the plan is a secret, it's a lie to sell, you know, you, this other evil, more dark plan where you're just killing people.
Right. Which is weird, is, cause isn't that kind of like a, I don't know, a callback or whatever to, you know, I talk about it on here a lot, like homeless industrial complex, is that kinda like what they're?
Sort of. Well, I mean, what they're basically saying is that.
It's, it's like a, it's a cash grab for shelter space or something like that.
Well, that Keith Wilson sold everybody on carrots and oh no, there's secretly sticks, but that's, that's a lie.
Yeah.
He has been honest and transparent to anyone who has asked, I've cornered him. I know people that have cornered him or his staffers and said like, there's gonna come a time when we gotta enforce some laws. And from the campaign trail to inauguration, whatever, all the way to today, they've said, yeah, but that's a last resort, but it's there, right? Last resort, very clear, compassion first, care first, but yes, you can't just be the machete guy of Cooch Park, right? We, we cannot have machete guys.
Yeah.
That's fair. So this is where Portland mayors in the past have failed. This is where a lot of Portland politicians, Portland nonprofits, a lot of people in Portland fail. Portlanders on average are very afraid of being accused of bad things. They don't like to be disliked and like, this was, this was a make or break moment for Keith Wilson where they're saying, you're murdering people. Literally, you're killing people, your plan will kill people, does kill people, has killed people, will continue to kill people. Uh, labor camps, prison camps, disappearing people, right? Really, again, this is that two Portland's, this is this exaggerated nonsense. But Keith Wilson is basically being accused of being, I mean, as close to calling somebody a Nazi as you can call them without just saying it. And this was his make or break. He could have folded and been like, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, we're gonna retool.
Yeah, he could have.
But he knew that he was right. He knew that he wasn't any of these things. He knew that the IRP is not disappearing people or just moving people around or most egregiously killing people or rounding them up into concentration camps, which is an insane thing to say. So he just stood in reality and said, no, that's not what we're doing. And he was nice about it. He was kind, he was patient. So that to me is huge.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting too how like, these, I was gonna say juvenile electeds are, everything just becomes like genocide. Like it doesn't matter if, even if it's a mayor of Portland, it's like, oh, and that's, they're just committing genocide or it's like the highest level of.
Yeah.
That you can imagine in this delusional reality, but, but yeah, it is like, I, the economic thing I was gonna, I was saying earlier, I, that backdrop to me is so important because to me, you know, and I, I know Keith peripherally, he's been on the show, I've been at events with him and stuff, but I know, to me, he's, he's very aware that Portland has a huge reputational problem, which the CFO of the city has talked about, I've clipped it and stuff and um, and he knows that that's not gonna go away until we start doing some of this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why he's doing it partially. Obviously, he does, you know, his whole campaign was helping the souls on the street. That's sure. Another primary reason, but it's like, if these guy, I don't know, if they're interested in all i- in helping the city, some of this stuff has to be done and like, he knows that. Uh, I think the other folks are just kind of living in some delusion.
Yeah. Uh, Reason, Reason Magazine uh, did a video on essentially why measure 110 failed. Hmm, about a month ago, month and a half ago, really good, really good video recommended, about a half an hour. Uh, Eli Arnold's in it and he's, and he's great. They interviewed the head of the Drug Policy Alliance, who was like a bit of a villain in a lot of people's stories in the measure 110 story, but they interview him and he says some very interesting things, which is essentially like, of course it failed. You, you have to sweep drug dealing encampments. If you're gonna decriminalize drug use, you can't allow tent cities of drug deal. You have to.
Gotta be prepared.
And he doesn't put flowery, he doesn't say, you have to manage the impact reduction and mitigation efforts and move, he says, you have to sweep encampments that turn into lawless drug dens. You must do, that is, it can't just be carrots. There do have to be some sticks. We're just modifying what the sticks are.
Interesting, yeah. Cause it's just acknowledging cause and effect.
Yes, it's acknowledging that you can't just, you can't say everything is fine. Anyone's allowed to do anything they want because we just can't think of a system where punishing anybody for anything could ever be just like.
Yeah, and there's like, there's gonna be no repercussions at all, you know, it's kinda weird way to, but that's surprising coming from that. Maybe that's over time.
Maybe that is over time. It's interesting. Well, cause, cause Reason is libertarian, right? And so they're presenting this from an avenue of not, what, their argument is not why drug legalization will fail. Their, their, their story was covered from the angle of why it failed in Oregon.
Right.
And specifically, they look at, we didn't roll out support.
Yeah, the treatment side and.
Also, we never legalized dealing, but we did, right? Because we stopped enforcing it, right? So it's like, it came with all the stuff where you go to these countries where it's succeeded and they go, no, no, dealing drugs is still illegal here. You can just, you can own it and possess it and use it, but you can't like deal it in front of a school. That's, that's insane.
Right.
And here, we went, yeah, you kinda can.
Yeah, and they have the infrastructure for treatment and all that.
Exactly, exactly.
To go, which we did not have and still don't have, I don't think really.
No, yeah, so, so that to me is like, um, it, it's interesting to hear, even the, even the hyper progressive groups that we based some of our, our plans on, they acknowledge, yeah, you gotta sweep. When camps become nightmare, lawless, like Mad Max Beyond Thunderdome, you know, post-apocalyptic. They gotta go. They absolutely have to go.
And you know, people like you and me have been talking about it for, gosh, it seems like years. It has been years.
Forty-five years, no.
But it is like, yeah, it's like, how much evidence do you need to be like, this is a problem and like for any major city, you can't allow that. It's just a societal problem and uh, and yeah, it's like, I don't know, part of what I was gonna mention here too, it's just a, it's still an ongoing part of this friction we're talking about between the blocks and the council and even the county to some degree. Of just this like, like I was thinking about it this, before recording this of like, I still don't think I've heard definitely Angelita, I don't think I've ever heard her say addiction or talk about addiction. I mean, you probably know better, you've seen more meetings than me, but like, I just, it's just striking to me that like, of, like, politically, of course, she's not gonna really highlight that, but in a city like this, if you don't bring it up, like what kind of, where is your head at? Like, it just doesn't make any sense and that, so that battle just, it, it's just still going and it's surprising and it'll probably, you know, go on to the end of their career, whenever that is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, they're gonna toe the line on housing first. It doesn't matter what evidence comes out against housing first. It doesn't matter that even, I spoke to Megan Moyer recently from the county and, you know, she's a housing first person, but there's an asterisk on that housing first. It's an adult, like.
Some people, yeah, some people, that definition's kinda forked into two things. And when I was talking to the president of Metro, we talked about that of like, cause they were basically framing it as their version of housing first is like a treatment required environment.
There you go.
And that's this huge battle now with like the president's executive order. Everyone's kinda come out against that because it's from the president.
Yeah, but.
And, but I don't know, it's like, to me, that's why I've said for years, housing first, the old version, the version that I used to talk about is just uh, it's been debunked for years. Like if you just give free housing to people that have an addiction, that's gonna end in an overdose or something horrible.
Yes, yes, so.
And there's statistics that back that up. They die indoors in San Francisco and places like that.
Well, and again, and this is back to my two Portland's, right? Alana Pertle-Ginni and Megan Moyer and let's say Shannon Singleton are very progressive women. I probably disagree with them on the specifics of some issues broadly. I actually think we probably agree on the same, we want Portland moving in the same direction and we disagree on the specifics of how to get there, but we disagree in a manner that I know right now, I could sit across the table from Megan Moyer and we could have an incredibly productive conversation about you know, working a compromise toward the best way for Portland, because I think that Megan Moyer lives in reality. I may disagree with her, I may disagree with.
Definitely, definitely closer than some of these council members.
Exactly. We disagree on some specifics. We maybe have, you know, maybe she's read literature I haven't read, I've read literature she hasn't read, or we interpret it in different ways, but it was an adult conversations. And then you get to that sort of DSA of like their version of housing first is leave people alone and give them keys to apartments. We have empty apartments. Put the people in the apartments and leave them the hell alone. And if they don't wanna go into the apartments, give them the keys anyway, maybe they'll change their mind someday. Leave, that's their apartment, it sits empty. And if they wanna live in a tent on the street, leave them alone, like bodily autonomy. That is an absurd, childlike view of the world that's just not rooted in reality.
Yeah, and I would even take it.
Strange.
A step further of like their, from what I've heard, you know, their version is more like, these are literally all families. There's no, there's nobody addicted on the street. And.
Yeah, this is.
And from what you're saying, not only do, we may have these empty vacant apartments, but we're gonna build like 7,000 new apartments sometime in the future to house everyone who needs free housing. That's kinda.
Yeah, okay.
The utopia that I've heard them talk about.
So this is the rhetorical Calvin ball that they play. We'll talk, so we've been talking around the sweeps fight, but this is an event that happened, this is the sweep, the sweeps fight or the impact reduction fight or whatever you want. We were looking at the TAO, which is the Technical Adjustment Ordinance. That's a mid-year, it's a fall adjustment to our budget. Usually would be called like the fall bump, cause we have more money than we thought we did. Yay, in good years, not the fall bump anymore. It's the fall pit. Uh, divi- it's like, it's pot, actually a pothole would be appropriate. It's the fall pothole. And we're gonna hit it, and so the mayor and his team come up with the best angle and speed for us to hit that pothole at. And then the DSA came up with, wow, what if we changed the way we hit that pothole? Where we defund the impact reduction teams because we wanna stop sweeps, cause sweeps kill. And we had the same thing with the public testimony. You had business leaders, you had uh, religious leaders, you had um, homeowners, renters, people from all, social workers, people from all walks of life come in to say how the impact reduction teams have helped them and their neighborhood and their lives. And then you had the DSA come forward and give this super cherry picked version of reality. And so they would say things like, you guys are talking about cleaning up all the needles, but not all drug user, or not all homeless people are drug users. Well, nobody said that they were. We were talking about cleaning up needles. I'm sure there are a ton of homeless people who are not drug users, but I don't clean up their needles because they don't have needles, right?
Product, yeah.
And by and large, these nice like immigrant families living in their cars that you're talking about, these people are not getting swept because they aren't nuisances, because they are not deeply mentally ill with horrible substance abuse problems forming bizarre little tent cities where there's just like prostitution and drug use run amok. These people.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, the problem with that is like, um, I would say this, the folks making that argument haven't even got to square one, which a lot of us had got to a couple of years ago of like, you need to distinguish between unsheltered homelessness and sheltered homeless, cause a lot of those families, there are a ton of programs to give. If you're one paycheck away from homelessness, like, which is true, a lot of people live right on that line in this country, but those type of folks, there are a ton of services available. The people who are on the street with the needles and stuff, there aren't really a lot of addiction services. So those are the ones that like everyone's trying to focus on.
Well.
Because it, it's not healthy for them, it's not healthy for.
Yeah.
Businesses, neighbors.
Yeah.
And if, if they can't make that distinction and they just lump them all into one category, like it sounds like some of that testimony was doing, it's like, that's problem one. You gotta.
Yeah.
You can't just lump everyone into one thing.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know.
I, I worked at a Walgreens during the pandemic, cause my gym got shut down. Uh, so I just took.
I don't remember that. Oh, I can, I think I vaguely remember this.
I took a part-time job at my neighborhood Walgreens, one of the scariest Walgreens in the city.
Yeah.
Um, uh, it also let me get the uh, vaccine early, cause I got on the priority, the priority list, cause.
Walgreens.
I got the Walgreens.
Expedited.
Yeah, I got the expedited vaccine, which was dope. Uh, but no, they, they shut down my gym in Oregon, took seven months to pay me pandemic unemployment insurance. So I had seven months, no income. I had savings, I, I tapped out my savings, uh, but I needed some, some, some cash in the meantime, so I took a part-time job at Walgreens. We had to chain the ice cream fridge shut. Now, we didn't chain the fridge with the stofers shut. We didn't chain the fridge. It was beer and ice cream chained shut. And the reason why is not because some dude who was a couple dollars short on rent that month was coming in and stealing a, a Hot Pocket. He could steal a Hot Pocket, that we had really no way of stopping you from stealing it, but we chained the ice cream shut because what happened is teenagers and or homeless people would come in with a backpack, open the backpack and sweep the shelf. Every single carton of Haagen-Dazs lost in 15 minutes, right? The whole shelf gone, right? And, and again, at that time, 2020, there was no way of stopping them. Uh, so we chained the fridge up and we would still have these hyper progressive like moms come in and be like, I cannot believe you would lock up food, the substance of life. And I would point to the fridge and go, that is literally just like uh, beer and ice cream.
Yeah.
There's a dentier more right there that you could absolutely steal and run with.
Nutritional things available.
But this is what they're doing with the sweeps stuff. They are pointing out, as Steve Novick covered in that sweeps fight, the majority of campsites are not swept. It is only the worst campsites. It's not, if there is a family who hasn't quite found services and they're living in a car, they're living in a tent, and I hope we get them services as quick as possible. These are not the people getting swept. The people getting swept, these are the scariest, worst, most environmentally damaging camps. Right? That's who's getting swept. There are probably hundreds of people in my neighborhood living in their cars right now, and my neighbors have no idea where they are. Because they are not causing a negative impact on the neighborhood. They are quietly living in their car. And again, I want to get them services. I want to get them into long term housing. But nobody. I won't say what type of vehicle it is. It's a very strange vehicle. There is a guy who lives in his vehicle in my neighborhood. Everybody knows him. I'm not gonna like. You know, blow up a spot, really swell dude, right? And we're like slowly working to get him housing. Has never been in trouble at all. His vehicle has never had a tow notice put on it. Nobody calls the police on him. Cause the guy is just getting by. There's never like an illegal fire in a doorway. There's nev- yeah.
He's not creating problems for his neighbors or himself or any, you know.
Yeah, this is, this is the, the DSA does this thing where they're like, well, you know, some of your housed neighbors do drugs too. And I'm like, yeah, and if my immediate housed neighbor. Was running a trap house, yeah, I would be doing absolutely everything I could to get them ousted. Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I was gonna say too, and people always forget, you know, we, the city is under the ADA settlement, which is a big piece of that of like, you know, if there are camps blocking sidewalks. The city quarter, on a quarterly basis has to show that they are. Adhering to ADA laws and clearing those sidewalks for disabled people.
But this is the cherry picked reality of, you know, they want to tell you stories about like an elderly woman. You know, just trying to go to the library. That's not who I'm dealing with. I mean, I I live in the densest part of Portland and who I am dealing with are not my homeless neighbors. That are not bothering anybody. I am dealing with a guy that we referred to as pantsless Samurai. I'll leave it up to the imagination, right? Like, this is not.
Yeah, well, and I was listening to some stuff recently about the old P pop group. I don't know. Are they still operating down there or?
Yeah, they picked a new spot. They're not in the school zone. They're not where they were right next to the meth Donalds. The, which has been a bit better. The West Burnside McDonald's, which we, man.
I was just, yeah, I was a. I don't know, it just seems like even worse, maybe it's still that bad, but when, cause I've, I've heard when you interact with the P pop folks or try to ask them questions. They are extremely abrasive and. Usually aren't really helpful. So it just like creates a double negative environment of like they're enabling people. Which are also, those folks can be aggressive and then the P pop folk, it's just like a bunch of negativity and like aggression and.
But in reality, and I've dealt with both groups, most of the P pop folks were far more aggressive than the users. The drug users were very, I would just ask them straight up, hey, if this.
They would at least answer you or something, yeah.
It's like if this van moved four blocks away, so it was outside a school zone, how would you feel about that? And they go, yeah, that's probably a better idea. Like they would be really straight up like, oh, are we in a school zone? Crap, I didn't know that was a school. That's probably not the best place for this. They were, you know, very.
Yeah, they at least acknowledge you and be like, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, and then you talk to P pop and they'll literally just look you, like if they even reply to you and don't just like whisper to themselves behind their cafe as in chuckle. They'll be like, yeah, how about you eat my ass, NIMBY? Like, it's like, okay, cool. I'm really glad we had this conversation. I'm so glad that we had this productive conversation.
I think that 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 kind of highlights the sort of division we're talking about with a lot of this is like, there's just people who. Are super vested in in that side of things and still, to me, it's just like they still just don't acknowledge that addiction is a huge problem and. You know, since twenty twenty, we just got the double dose of COVID and fentanyl. And that just destroyed Portland and a lot of people still don't acknowledge that.
Well, and even the the anti measure one ten people, and I got, I got sympathy for the anti measure one ten people. One ten was a disaster, but we do need to acknowledge it was a disaster in part because of just the universe's worst timing. It was terrible, terrible implementation, sold, we were sold a thing and didn't get the thing we were sold. So I just, I want to like free up people. If you voted for one ten and then you regret it, but you have this idea of like, oh my God, I'm an idiot. I can't believe I voted for that thing. You're not an idiot.
Right. Yeah, I've, I've talked about it all the time. Most people I talk to have voted for.
Yes, you were sold something that sounded like a really great idea.
And it said that there will be treatment. Which was not true.
So the implementation was terrible. We should have suspected that because this is Oregon, uh, and that's how we do. We do terrible implementation. Always suspect worst and worst, this is social housing. We can get like, it's like, yeah, not gonna go well, but that's fine because it's Oregon. Uh, and then, yeah, and then the wham bam of COVID and all the other crap. Yeah, it all at once. It was a disaster. So just to free up people, like the weight on your shoulders, you weren't just stupid and didn't read enough. Like you were sold a thing that sounded, you know.
Yeah, it sounded great.
Probably should have known better, but you know, have some, have some forgiveness for yourself.
Yeah, it was kind of sold as like, hey, we got all the safety nets ready for this thing and there was none of that.
And that would have been rad. That would have been super rad, but it didn't happen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let me quickly go through. Some of these notable events here. Cause we've been talking a lot about sort of more recent stuff, which is good that this has been occupying, I would say, I don't know, the past six months of political Portland. What we've just been talking about, maybe, I mean, a whole year or two, but. So, I mean, we talked about this on the first review we did, but I just put. To me, there's, there is still the kind of this theme of political violence and we talked about. I just wish I would have done a better job of the first one we did because Max and I were there at the society hotel thing and we mentioned that in the first one, but I just didn't. Put in some clips, I'll put in some video and stuff of here of, of when we were there. But it, you know, it just. Through a lot of the year with her and Mitch and other folks, I've seen this theme of. You know, we talked about, I think on the last one or one of the last two ones about, you know, the PSU thing and some of these other examples. There's just this theme of like, it's okay when we do it. And I don't know, I'm still like, it's been a while, but I'm still pretty shocked at that, the society hotel thing. It was just really weird. And that was like, when was that? February or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're pretty, pretty, pretty close to a year from that, out from that. Yeah, I mean, you. You sick a group of protesters on somebody who stands up to you in some way, right? This is, this is where I sometimes get the question from people like, where are our local celebrities? Cause Portland has local sub, we've got big bands from here. We've got big companies. I'm not talking intel big, but I'm talking like beloved Portland institutions, right?
Let's say that, I don't know why I was thinking that Portland gear guy, Marcus.
It's a great example of somebody who's like a, you know, influential in the city, but but thought of quite well. These are, these are people who are really well respected, right? Uh, I don't know, Fred Armisen dropped in to to cheer on the frog protesters against Trump. Yeah, but it but like he and Carrie Brownstone, they haven't weighed in on like, yeah. How the city that they, you know, allegedly love so much, like really, really hit the skids hard.
Yeah, no, it's interesting that, yeah, it's like, where were they in twenty twenty?
But the thing is, if you stick your head up like Jesse Burke did. I mean, there's a chance that they sick a giant protest mob on you for largely unrelated reasons, right? There's a chance that they fill your neighborhood with anti you graffiti, right? This is the fuck Jesse Burke stickers all over Old Town.
And I think if I have photos, there were photos of those at the thing we were at, people were putting those stickers everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And weird like posters where like Jesse Burke says pee pee poo poo.
Yeah, something, I don't even remember, but it was like the most vile bullshit and it's just like, why, it's, it's hard to even imagine. I don't know. There's, I talked to a lot of political leaders all across Oregon and just like, none of that shit exists except here. And it's only because of like this real.
No, it's ridiculous.
Divisive kind of folks, but but yeah, I just, that was like, to me, one of the first notable things of the year chronologically that I can remember. But that's after the council president election we were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but but it.
And it set a tone too.
It's, it's set a tone. It's set a tone that these kids play by their own rules and they get to play pretty dirty. Not totally illegal all the time, although I mean, again, illegal things happened at society hotel. I can't necessarily make the claim that that's Angelita Maria's fault.
It was kind of, it was a group like, sort of like P pop, we were just talking about that was kind of activated and. And secondhand form.
This was something Eric Zimmerman in the, in that council session tiptoed up to, right? Where he was like, ooh, I want to be real careful about us kind of like. Raising emotions towards specific business owners, because who knows what could happen? And that's the responsible thing, right? We, you know, you can't say that Angelita Maria incited violence, no. But by using your giant platform to direct anger at specific local business owners. Yeah, you have increased the likelihood that that something bad will happen. And in this case, a pregnant woman was violently assaulted. That for doing her job of trying to run a hotel.
Yeah, and it was just, I don't know, I mean, we talked about, I'm sure at that, on that episode, but it was just like, I still haven't like seen something like that really. Since the twenty twenty era. I don't know, maybe there's other stuff this year. Obviously the ICE stuff is kind of similar, but it wasn't really. Like to me, those were the same Antifa people and we recognized a lot of them and. Maybe they were got kind of smarter this year with strategy as to not like be seen as much, but that was like, this is the same old shit. And I was like, oh God, here we go again.
Well, I was honestly, I was worried. There were some posts about like some of the ICE dudes or, I don't can't remember if it was the ICE dudes or if it was the feds, just feds in general. Were like picking up, I think Domino's pizza. And somebody like posted photos of the pizza place and I thought, oh shit. No, 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 leave the, leave the Domino's work. Like, don't go down there. I was worried that we were gonna end up with just like a bunch of Domino's pizza workers getting harassed by like. You know, Mitch Green's dumbest fans. I just, I, that was like, that was a, I was not happy about that. But but yeah, you're right. We didn't see as much of that continuing, like the ICE protesters kept it to ICE. I mean. Then that neighborhood, I mean, there's a lot of splash damage in the neighborhood for sure, but they weren't like, we found out they went and picked up. Food at Elephant's delicatessen. So now we're gonna go down to El, like. And I was worried we were gonna see a lot more of that.
Maybe at some point do, we could do a whole episode on that. Cause it was really interesting. I just think that they intentionally did like a strategy shift of like. This stuff is way too visible. It does not. It's not digested well.
The whispers I got from the inside.
And once the costume thing happened, then they're just like, this is working out great.
Yeah, it's friendly or it's funny or friendly and funny has been good for them. And you know what? Good. Keep it friendly and funny. Keep it protest.
No matter how you feel about it, it's like, that's way better than people in black block beating shit out of people and stuff like that.
If you, if you, if you're saying it's your first amendment right to protest, and it definitely is, then keep it protesty. Don't make it scary. And protest adjacent, but a little smashy, a little threateningy. So this was back to your P pop thing. This, it it got in the news, but I can't like, put a fine enough point on the fact that some of my neighbors. Were followed home by P pop supporters. Now, P pop like disavows, right? The, the person, my P pop contact was like, we disavow that. That was horrible that they followed, uh, your neighbor home. And vaguely threatened her in front of the police, but that happened. That happened on security footage. We know that that happened. We have video footage of that happening. Followed home for asking a harm reduction group to move out of a school zone. Like, so.
Insanely creepy.
But that was happening back in that same window with the society hotel. And I think there probably were meetings had because my, my sort of sources from inside. Say society hotel was an optical disaster. It was a nightmare. It made them look crazy and violent. And it made Jesse Burke look good. Uh, and they don't want that. And so in the same case, in the P pop, it made P pop look crazy and violent. It made the neighbors look reasonable and calm and compassionate, which is accurate, but. And so, yeah, you're right. There was like a, there was like a tone change.
I think there's a pullback or something, yeah, because there was like a good amount of. You know, KPTV did some great reporting on it. There, I think there was a lot of good press coverage that was showing like, this is insane what this group is doing. And it's just more twenty twenty style stuff and nobody wants that.
People were feeling twenty twenty again, and I've just, y'all, if you don't remember how bad twenty twenty got. Those videos from downtown of like that horrible seven eleven. Or was it a plaid pantry where the, the teens just hung out every night and like mugged people? A dude who was drug from his truck and beaten because he was in the wrong.
Yeah, there's so many, yeah, and they break, breaking into, I can't remember what building and lighting it on fire from the inside. There's so many crazy.
Apartment building they lit off, there were really, really scary, like the knock on effects of creating a. A sphere of anything goes and then the periphery of that sphere. You get some pretty unwell people.
Yeah, and I think that's why, you know, the reputational stuff I was talking about, I think that still lingers now because that's why anytime there's something like on May Day or whatever's going on. Businesses just board up by default, especially downtown. I mean, east side probably not as much, but, but there's just this, this.
Here we go again.
Kind of reaction or self-defense mechanism of like, just we gotta do it because. The risk is pretty high.
No, and we're getting, and we're getting further from that and I'm happy that we're getting further from that. Cause I don't, I don't want, I want people to be able to do their silly May Day march with the weird harp conspiracy theory dude.
Every year, they'll do that.
Yeah, that'll be fine. But like, I want them to be able to do it without all the local business owners going, alright, we're giving everybody the day off and we're shutting down.
Yeah, put the metal fence around it. Okay, I'm gonna just go through some of these other ones. Um, you know, budget season, we kind of talked about that already. I don't know if there's anything else to say. It just seemed like that was kind of a. Tone setting thing on both sides of like, here's kind of where we're at, here's where things fell. Here's where things ended up and. For the most part, Keith's budget stayed intact.
So that's it. It was a tremendous amount of fighting to end up roughly back at the same spot. And that had that, like whether we look at the city council president, right, first event. Whole lot of fighting to kind of end up back in the same spot roughly. Budget, whole lot of fighting to end up back in the same, yes, like, they're the party of no, they can block anything, but they have struggled to get stuff really done. But it was ugly. It was ugly and divisive.
I think for, yeah, the, the biggest takeaway, yeah, was probably that because these sessions were like twelve hour meetings. You could just get to see who these people really are on a much bigger kind of magnifying glass. And there's just a huge window of time to like watch their behavior and stuff. And some of that was pretty. Pretty obnoxious. But yeah, we talked about that. I wrote down foreign policy because to me, that's just like a theme for a lot of the peacock throughout the whole year. They're just constantly focused on stuff that's. Thousands of miles away, has nothing to do with Portland. And sometimes try to implement policy to affect that. Um, the PSU thing was kind of somewhat an example of that. Uh, I don't, that wasn't really policy. That was more of like a threat.
More a direct threat.
Um, and then I wrote down Vienna. We, we've talked about that before, I'm sure. Vienna gate thing. And plus costs because I got, I did get like a whole dump of receipts for peacock. And it, I don't know, I just wrote that down because it is really interesting to me. You know, you and I talk a lot about these insane salaries that they get. And then there's on top of that, this huge. Expenditure kind of list that. Is still ongoing, like who knows at the end of the year how much more it'll add up, but. But yeah, the Vienna trip, I think got a decent amount of pushback from the Oregonian covered it. A lot of people covered it pretty well of like. The cost. And then it just seemed like to me at least, and maybe it's my bubble that I'm in, that everyone was kind of like, this wasn't really necessary. It just seemed like another kind of like.
Well, yeah.
Fanciful trips that makes people, I don't know, reinforces their, their kind of bias on their opinions already.
Yeah, this is, you know, and some people tried to point out, well, Tina Kotek took a trip to Japan. Yeah, but Tina Kotek took a trip to Japan because we actually have like significant trade with Japan.
We have, she knows, I'm sure. What do you call them? Diplomats and people like that.
Sure, sure. But I mean, there's, I, you know, there's significant trade and travel between here and Japan, like.
Across the Pacific.
Yeah, this is Mitch Green and Candace Avalos and et cetera did not go to Vienna to secure us millions of dollars in, in. You know, trade, right? Whereas I know local businesses that have, have been making trips to Japan. Again, to keep costs on imports down, to work around the Trump tariff situation, like, yeah.
By the way, this is kind of off topic, but I, I saw, I think it was in the thing that you were in with the Washington Examiner that there's a, there's a Japanese museum here. I never knew that.
Japanese American museum. It's a really lovely, it's little, it's, I mean, it's Portland, it's little.
That's, that was like my exact reaction. I was like, there's a lot of these kind of little museums. They're pretty small, but it's probably worth a visit.
Yeah, it it is. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a, an old, like a very old and, and well established Japanese American community. In Portland. Unfortunately, they show up for Tiffany Koyama Lane. I gotta talk to them about that. Like, hey, come on, guys. Not in your best interests, but yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I was in the, I was in the Washington Examiner for like a half a second, which was, which was cute.
No, I thought it was cool. It's a good story. Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say about that Vienna thing was like, it just, to me, it just seemed like there, people could not draw a connection of like, what, why are they doing this? What's going on?
Why do we need to go there?
And there's a lot of people that went that probably should, didn't need to. Oh, I wrote down round two because that was kind of the stuff we talked about before. I saw the past few months as like a round two of. It was mostly Angelita's like trying the same stuff that failed in the budget session. It was kind of the, the, what were you calling it? The pothole. Area of, of the budget where they got a second chance to kind of tweak things. Area of, of the budget where they got a second chance to kind of tweak things. She tried some of that. The, the rent thing did go through. Um, I talked about that a little bit on some of the live stuff. I was, it just seemed like that's a way more easy thing to get traction on. It's easy to sell. It's easy to understand. I don't really agree with it. I think it's bad for housing, but.
Well, here's, here's what I want to highlight because that, okay, it, it got through in round two, right? She put it forward initially. And it was bad initially. It was really bad.
What, it didn't, did it get out of committee the first time? I don't even remember.
No, it, it, uh, it's, it stalled out in commi- no, 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 sorry. They brought it to full counsel. Uh, and there were a lot of questions. There were questions like, does this accidentally? Ban using Excel spreadsheets because you know, Microsoft Office use like, these were good questions. These were good questions because again. Just to, to really nail it down, price fixing is illegal. So if you're gonna pass an ordinance to make a thing that is illegal, like more illegal or add additional penalties onto it. You really need to be super careful that you're not accidentally causing other, you know.
Secondary effects or whatever.
This is where I'll pay Steve Novak a compliment. That's something, that's one of Steve Novak's areas that he understands that there are, you don't just do stuff. You don't just, like, I, I compared this to a lot of people in my neighborhood. It's like, say that you pass, I, I put forward a piece of legislation. To make it illegal to use AI to assist you in defrauding seniors. It's already illegal to defraud seniors, so I need to make really sure with my weird piece of legislation that's probably completely unnecessary. That I'm not also, you know, like making chat GPT illegal in the state of Oregon, whatever.
Or yeah, like, yeah, then that's a good example, I think, cause like if there's like a service that. I can't imagine a lot of older folks would use, but if there's AI service that they might enjoy, maybe that's unintended consequences, like banning that.
Some weird, because again, Dan Rayfield went after a large property manager. For price fixing and they settled out of court for millions of dollars.
This was, yeah, like a month ago.
This was, yeah, well, and they used this as an example of why this is a pressing issue right now, but it's not an example of why, I mean, yes, price fixing is a pressing issue. We need to make sure that we're going after. Big companies for colluding, but, but we already.
Yeah, it's enforcing a current law.
Yes, we already have antitrust laws. We already have many of them. We already have every tool that we need and look at Dan Rayfield. Yay. Yay for Dan Rayfield. I like Dan Rayfield. He's a nice enough guy. Uh, he did his job. That's wonderful. He didn't need this proposal. So. The, but back to I guess my original point, the first version of this was bad, poorly written. It had unintended consequences. It scared the shit out of mom and pop landlords. Angelita Mario hopping up there and going, there's no reason why it should scare you. It totally leaves you out. Calm down is not.
Yeah, it's not reassuring.
If even ten mom and pop landlords. Just decide, screw it, I'm done and sell their properties because they're like, I am just so tired of these DSA kids just putting more and more regulations on the books. We already have enough regulations. Just go after the criminals and leave me the hell alone. If ten mom and pop landlords sell their properties because they're tired of dealing with this bullshit. Oh, look, your rental stock just dropped. Great. You have less rental supply. Fantastic. You've done nothing to help renters. In fact, you have. At least slightly hurt them. And so this was the argument against the proposal, but when it got to its, you know, round two. It gets through and a lot of Purtle Guineas up there like congratulating Angelita Mario on her willingness to work with others and, you know. Get us from a no to a yes and shape the bill.
Cause she was a yes vote, right?
Cause, but she was originally a no, and they got it to a yes for her. And I thought, can we just acknowledge that this was like. A pile of shit when she first wrote it, that it was bad, bad proposal and that it took. Local businesses and other counselors and like politicians at the state level saying, don't do it this way for her to.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, and I could see some people arguing, well, that's a, that's a healthy form of legislation in the city to, to have it go through that process, but I. My whole thing with it is like, it just, it just clashes with everything. The mayor, the governor, everyone's trying to do to. In their own words, cut red tape around housing where, and then they're adding more red tape around renting. It just, it doesn't line up at all and. I get it, like in Portland, this kind of pro renter thing is always gonna work and I'm a renter. I say it like every show, I feel like, but um. I don't even support it. And that's because I have more insight into housing and I just know that housing and regulation are not bedfellows like. They, it says they're sworn enemies and the more regulation there is, there's just a stigma that adds to this reputation Portland already has that is. Not open for business.
I just got my rent increase for the year. I got my new lease offer sent thirteen bucks a month is the increase. Cause my landlord, horrible, awful rich lady, just a monster, legitimately a lovely human being. Just a wonderful person. Um, uh, only owns nine, ten units. She needs to keep a hundred percent occupancy to make money. And so she does everything in her power to keep us in those units. She likes all of us, you know, we've done a good job cultivating. A good relationship. She's a wonderful woman. Uh, and yeah, I'm a renter and um, yeah, I didn't support this either because I didn't see what it did. I agree with Dan Ryan. It was a solution in search of a problem. It was, it, it just was.
I was gonna mention real quick too, people, I don't know, maybe they don't know, but Portland like has a wild amount of. Renter protections already, and one of them I think is you have to, uh, if you're changing the rent amount, I believe you have to give ninety days notice, which is like. Two months more than most jurisdictions. Most places, I think it's thirty days. There's all sorts of stuff like that. That's like. Really giving renters a lot of protection.
Then there's limits. If, if a person decides to switch to month to month, there's limits on how much higher that rent rate can be, which is. I'm not complaining. These are fine things, but it is already fairly challenging to be a landlord here versus other places. And I know wealthy couples who have, they only had one rental, you know, they had like a duplex. And they sold it. They were like, it's just getting harder every year to stay inside, to color inside the lines. And like, meh, we're done. We're just, we're just gonna sell it.
And, and yeah, you have a property, I don't know, ten miles in a different jurisdiction and you don't have to do any of that.
No, that's right. You own a, yeah, you own a property down in Clackamas and you're like, man, it is a breeze to rent that duplex out.
Find a good tenant. Good relationship.
I do want to call back to something you said earlier, which you didn't say you were echoing, but this like, we're all like, we're two paychecks away from being homeless. No, we're not. We're absolutely not. We, we gotta have, we gotta have a real conversation around this.
What do you mean? All the safety nets available is.
Yes, we are too, and I'm proud of this about Portland. We are too missed paychecks away from being in a lot of trouble. Being in a really, really precarious, shameful, like embarrassing situation. You gotta turn to family, you gotta turn to friends, you gotta turn to social safety nets, you gotta turn to food stamps. Sure.
I'm glad you bring this up though, because there are like a lot of these homeless services program, including the, including Metro's tax is. A large, large portion of that is renter protection. And all that is, is rent assistance. They're giving you money to help pay your rent.
And, and we've got free legal defense and we've got, and again, not that everybody gets it. I've certainly had friends who've been preyed on by slum lords. Like, I, not everybody gets caught by this net. But if you are literally, and again, let's look at evictions. So it's like, how long does it take to actually evict somebody?
In this area, it's like.
It ain't two weeks.
Year at least.
It's months, it's months. So you are two weeks away. To miss, if, if you don't have good savings and a lot of people don't, and we need to work on this, but you are two missed paychecks away from being in a lot of trouble. The good news is, once you're in a lot of trouble, a lot of things start to kick in and they're embarrassing things. They are things where you have to go looking for handouts from other people. And that can be very embarrassing, but the people who are literally getting evicted today, their shit is getting set on the curb. There's a long story there.
That process probably started a year ago.
And there's probably a story about some really bad decisions being made. There's probably a story about drug addiction. There's probably. Or there's a story where they moved in with a girlfriend, but she didn't put them on the lease. And so technically they don't have, like. There's, there's more context there, but the average Portlander is not two missed paychecks away from living on the street. That is simply not true.
No, it's a good point. Cause yeah, like I, I don't know, I should highlight that more, but yeah, there's like, I don't even know the percentage, but I feel like it's sixty, seventy percent. A lot of this money. Especially in the metro tax is exclusively for rent assistance. And that's all that is, is to, if you can't pay your rent, that money is allotted and. Divvied out to people who are in that situation. Um, and that's, I'm not even, we're not even talking about stuff like. Regular unemployment insurance, which if you lose your job, that's available in Oregon. Um, there's all sorts of stuff and. In Oregon that are safety nets for that type of thing.
Yeah, somebody, I mean, and again, this is not to shame anybody who ends up living in their car. I've, I have friends who've lived in their cars. I've, I've had, I've had friends who've been homeless. But you dig into those stories and there's a lot of weird context there. There's also a lot of weird context where again, right? Like they ended up living in their car because like they didn't. Take advantage of any of those things. They just were like, I'll just move into my car for a second and I'll get back on my feet next month, which is a decision you can make, but like they.
Yeah, it's a tough thing. There is like a level of shame to that, like, you know, I've been unemployed for longer periods of my life and uh. Even getting on unemployment is, you know, that's not the most sexy thing to begin with, but then like I never choose to get on uh, SNAP or food stamps. And a lot of people could, right? That's a choice, you know?
Choice you made. And I know people that do that. They're like, I'm too good for SNAP. You're not too good for, I mean, whatever. You make the choice for you. I'm not judging anybody, but, but you're not too good for SNAP. You just use, use the services. We have them for a reason. Our taxes pay for them for a reason, but I just, I'm sick of. Our neighbors are gonna starve. It is impossible to starve in Portland, Oregon. It is impossible and I am so proud of that. That's where that Keith Wilson friendly, good news guy stuff comes in where I actually do like him on this stuff because. I love that I live in a city you can't starve to death and you can't starve to death here unless you are. Like cognitively incapable of, of seeking out food, that then we need to get you in long-term care and that's us abandoning you. Cause you're not, your brain isn't.
Yeah, or if you have some issue eating or whatever, yeah.
Sure, 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 sure. But, but there's no way that you're just like, yeah, I got no money, man. So I'm just gonna, I guess I'm gonna starve to death. No, 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 no.
Portland's, you know, for Oregon and Portland specifically, we're super generous. That's the whole reason people pay more taxes all the time. They just want to see that go somewhere. Where it's like, oh, I can see my money reflected here. I was thinking about it this week of like, it's, sometimes it's like, if you were just to look at. And it's getting better. Like we talked about Keith stuff, but um. If an outsider were to just look at some random piece of downtown or Old Town, sometimes I think they'd be like, do you guys like have a government? Like, is there any? It just seems like, and that's what I'm saying, like a lot of, like everyone I talked to is like, I don't see my taxes reflected in any way. Um, but we're getting better. On the city level with some of that.
Well, and this is where I'm gonna be a little cuddly toward our homeless services because I, I live right next to a shelter now. Okay, yeah. Shelter went into my neighborhood. A lot of neighbors were really upset about that. I was less upset. I'm just that, it's fine. It's just who I am. I am absolutely a bleeding heart liberal. Uh, I go down to that shelter periodically. I know some people that volunteer there. I know a person who works there. I know some of the security guards like a little bit. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll stand outside and chat with them for a bit and. A couple of weeks ago, I was like just trying to go get a burrito at Chipotle and somebody over there flagged me down. So I was like, crap, I'm not gonna eat my burrito. I went over to hang out for a bit and this dude, I don't even know, like older guy runs up to me. He's like offering me his elbow. I like bumped his elbow and I was like, all right, what was that for? And he's like, yeah, I got good news, man. I just got my ID. I just got on Oregon Health Plan. I'm getting PT for my undealt with knee injury tomorrow. I'm staying in like a warm place tonight. I'm getting, I'm getting like, I'm getting my stuff back in order. I'm getting, getting. And I was like, okay, I would like to, can we elbow bump again? Cause that was a contextless elbow bump. Like I actually want to offer you like a real one, because that's phenomenal. And if you talk to those guys, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cases of that care. This is the life-saving care that Keith Wilson talks about all the time. But you're right, there's also like just thousands, thousands more than we can help. So. I get both perspectives. Like I get the perspective of like, where the hell are my tax dollars going? But then if you go volunteer at one of these shelters, if you go volunteer. At a soup kitchen essentially, right? Brian Oandoff, my, my buddy, my buddy Brian, he, he feeds people like weekly. But he also gets to see the inside and he gets to see the lives that are changed. And this is where Keith Wilson isn't blowing smoke. There's. Some really beautiful things happening. It is a beautiful city in many ways. We're just completely overwhelmed. We're way past capacity. And we do have, I mean, we do have lazy grifters who are not doing their part that are just sponging up public money and not helping. That absolutely is also happening. There is a homeless industrial complex and there also are so many amazing care providers. It's, both things are true.
For sure. Yeah, I'd agree with that. Um, yeah, I think that's kind of all the current stuff and I do, do need to get to the uh. Letter grade stuff, probably, probably. Max and I could do this for like seven hours. I don't know though. I do want to go through, maybe we'll lump it in with, I wanted you to walk people through the, the. I don't even know what to call it. Mitch's anti-Israel.
There we go.
Press conference.
Sure.
Let's just do that and then we'll do the letter.
Mitch's big pledge. Okay, Mitch's big pledge. So Mitch, along with the rest of the peacock, but this is, this is a Mitch Green led thing. Uh, signed a pledge to investigate complicity in. Israel's policies.
The nation of Israel.
The nation of Israel. So we're looking for Portland based.
The city of Portland is.
We're looking for this Portland-based weapons manufacturers or transportation companies that transport weapons to Israel. Or companies that do business in Israel or really just companies that have any sort of tie to Israel. It's a BDS. It's a boycott divestment and sanctions pledge. Now, in Mitch's defense, he has, according to him, spent basically zero hours and zero minutes. On this pledge so far, so no city time, which is not true, but that's fine. No city time is, has gone into this, but they held a press conference. Press conference was announced on the city website. Maria Sipin, his chief of staff, hosted Portland.gov. Announced the press conference. The press conference is actually a Zoom press conference held by the DSA. It's a little weird to have the city announce a press conference for a political organization.
That's, and I'm gonna say right now, that's probably illegal. I'll get into it later with the charter.
It's not, it's not great. At the, at the best, it's not great because they are, the DSA are registered lobbyists. Olivia Cappy, co-chair of the DSA, who hosted that press conference is a registered lobbyist with the city of Portland. There's, there's stuff that's not good.
Yeah, as far as posting something like that on a city website that is part of a political party, that's straight up illegal. I'll just say that right now. But anyway, keep going.
So, uh, press conference app, Zoom press conference. Um, during the press conference, Portland's uh, only Jewish newspaper. The Jewish Review sends their only reporter, Rockney Roll. He is kicked out of the Zoom room, uh, not allowed back in.
But he was in for.
He was in for like a, for like a, for like a brief second. Um, so I contact him because I, I'm, my phone is blowing up. They've kicked Rockney out, like, like they've kicked out the only Jewish reporter. Uh, and so I, I reach out to a bunch of people. I ended up chatting with Rockney for a second. And he's like, yeah, they kicked me out. I don't know. They don't have like a good answer for me, but they sent me the, the, um, the video anyway. And we all got the video of the press conference. And the press conference is wild. It's weird.
This is the whole Zoom recording.
The whole Zoom recording. It's, it's on YouTube. It's easy to find. Um, it, it's, it's just bizarre. Um, and. You can kind of tell most of the peacock members don't even want to be there. Avalos and Dunphy didn't even show up. At one point Mitch Green's like in his car driving somewhere. It's, it's such a dumb, dumb.
It was intended to have all the peacock members.
I mean, at the very least, the DSA members are all there and they, you know, they say the word genocide a lot and they say the word complicity a lot and. Samir Canall makes it clear that they're not currently going after Intel, for example, because Intel decided not to build that data center in Israel. Here's the thing though, they're, they will, if they actually follow through on this pledge, they will absolutely eventually have to go after Intel because Intel does a tremendous amount of business.
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have like huge buildings.
Yes, they do. They just didn't, they didn't, they didn't build a giant data center. And the BDS movement was like, we won, we convinced them not to. Yeah, Intel was going through like some really big financial heart, yeah, of course they didn't build a billion dollar. Data center. They're kind of scaling back at the moment. They're not in a good place, but.
What I was thinking, plus they're not even in, they're in what Hillsborough or Beaver Tenset? I know they might have some offices here, but.
And there's like a, there's like a scope manufacturer in Hillsborough or somewhere. There's weapon and like. That might sell defense contract.
That are not in Portland.
That are not in Portland, but they might be moving through Portland. So then where do, where do we go with this? Do we start investigating the port of Portland? Do we task the port of Portland? By the way.
There's not a lot going on there.
No, but I like reached out to the port of Portland. I was like, how you guys feel about like the city council and. Um, short version is, uh, the answer I got was they can try. So.
Right. I think they may have their own sort of jurisdiction because they're port.
Yeah, and they're, and they're federally regulated and they're union. And so they're like, nah, they could try. It would be cute if they, but so it's, it's unclear what this resolution does. Other than just make a big loud blast about how bad Israel is and how bad anybody with connections to Israel read Jewish businesses are. Uh, and then they kick out the only Jewish reporter. So unfortunately that happens because that becomes the only news story, the pledge. And what they'll do and what this even means and where they would even go with this is totally secondary to the fact that they ejected a Jewish reporter. The original version of the story is, oh, it must have been a volunteer. His name is Rockney Roll. That's a really strange name. I bet they thought he was a troll. Problem is, Rockney didn't put his name in. He put his press credentials in, the Jewish Review. So whoever kicked him was kicking the reporter from the Jewish Review, right? So the Jewish Review covered the story. It was covered in a couple of other places. It sadly died. So the Jewish Review covered the story. It was covered in a couple of other places. It sadly died pretty quick because anytime there's an antisemitic incident in Portland, it gets, it dies pretty quick. People are tired of hearing about antisemitism in Portland. Um, yeah, Mitch Green uh kinda I think hoped that would go a little bit under the radar.
Okay. Well, yeah, the one thing I had never heard of was that I heard that they had some explanation why they kicked this person out. And for some reason, my head this whole time, I thought it was an in-person press conference. Not that it matters that much, but.
No, it wasn't.
But that is like, yeah, like knowing that now, that is pretty flimsy as far as an excuse to be like.
And Mitch has apologized. I'll give him, I guess, that credit. Like he had directly, yeah, directly reached out to Rockney and apologized. Um, and he, Mitch was visiting the Hillsdale uh Neighborhood Association and he got kinda uh ambushed by some Jewish residents of that neighborhood and they had similar questions. They were just like, why are you doing this? Like, why? And you know, he kinda deflected a little bit. Well, we apologized for the situation where we kicked out the reporter. That shouldn't have happened. And yeah, maybe we should have reached out to you guys to let you know we were gonna be taking this pledge, but we're still taking the pledge, you know, and we have constituents that feel really passionately about this. And it's, you know, it's a, it's a good little bit of video that I have access to, which is just these Jewish residents saying, we don't like, we don't want you to be pro-Israel. We just want you to shut up.
Yeah, or at least just don't discriminate against.
Yeah, we just want you to like leave Jewish Portlanders alone. Stop. It's an international issue. It has nothing to do with you. Stop making this one of your campaigning pieces. This is like a plat, this is like a platform. This is a post of your platform. This is not good. This is not good. They gave examples of ways in which Jewish Portlanders have been attacked for being visibly Jewish. Uh, it was good. I'm glad that Mitch got to hear from constituents in that way, but this has just been, this is the DSA. You run for the DSA, you're gonna run against Israel. You have to. It is a core belief of the DSA now. They have purged the Zionists from their ranks. It is now required. You have to be an anti-Zionist to be a DSA politician. And if you are found to be insufficiently anti-Zionist.
You're probably not gonna be.
You're gonna get kicked out of the party. Yeah, they're gonna, yeah. Um, so people just have to decide if you're gonna vote for DSA people regardless of your feelings about their policies, do you wanna vote for a politician who is required by their political party to be anti-Israel?
Yeah.
That's a really strange thing to want on a city council.
Yeah.
Um, it's not good for Jews for sure.
For sure. And I've talked about it before. I I just look at it almost apolitically too of like, it's just so weird to, to me, it doesn't matter what population it is. Like if they were doing this to any population that has people in Portland.
Yeah.
This is just so offensive and discriminatory and it's, you know, I've said it before, it's, it violates federal discrimination laws, like a bunch of them. Um.
Yeah, we would be having, we'd be having this conversation if the DSA had a really hard line stance on the Tigray War with Ethiopia and Eritrea and like, if they had some hard line stance where they're like, you know, we stand against the nation of Ethiopia, absolutely against them. Like you'd have Ethiopian, and there are a ton of Ethiopian Portlanders would be like, whoa, I really don't need this from you. Like this is just not helping anything. No one has benefited from this.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that, and that's it. It's just like, no one needs you to switch your opinion. But if you're a city councillor, we do need you to shut up.
Yeah, just don't go after populations that might be in your district. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Um, okay. Um, yeah, let's get into the letter grades. I'm gonna let you start first. And I was saying this before, if you wanna start in District Four.
We'll start in District Four.
Since that's where you are, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. However, whichever order you wanna get in, guys, this might be a little sloppy, but we're just gonna go through and do like A through F letter grades.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Classic school.
And you can do the Santa thing if you want. You don't have to do that though.
No, I mean, in in my district, it's pretty easy. I'm gonna give Eric Zimmerman and Olivia Clark a solid B. Okay. Just a solid B. Um, I I fully endorse both of them for getting reelected. I think they've done a fine enough job, especially given what they've been up against. Um, there's been some friendliness with, this has been my problem with the, the council in general. The council is one half cry bullies, right? So it's people that the cry bully is perfectly fine bullying. And then the moment somebody calls them out and it suddenly they are the victim, right? Oh no, I'm now being accosted. It's so mean. Where's the decorum? Why aren't people being kind to me? And at a certain point, the only way to meet that cry bully bullshit is just uh cold professionalism. You go like, hey, man, I'm not playing these games with you.
Yeah.
Let's show up, let's do the job. But Eric Zimmerman keeps taking his little cute matching outfit pictures with Angelita Mario, which is not cordial. It's friendly and that's fine, but just understand that this is a person who's gonna stab you in the back as often as they possibly can. I'm not saying you gotta be mean to her. Just cold professionalism would play better. Um, I don't wanna give these kids any, um, I didn't like that Alana Pirtleguine, you know, congratulated her DSA colleagues on their, their teamwork on the the rental band. They didn't have teamwork. They dunked on Dan Ryan constantly. They shit on anybody who criticized them. They maligned any Portlander who testified against that as a shill for big business. They were not professional. So it was stupid. So Alana's gonna end up falling in a similar camp. I, I don't, I don't like Eric and Olivia's inability to kind of broadly stand up to that stuff and say, this isn't professional knockoff. Just like, yeah, just show a little bit of teeth. You don't have to be their level of unprofessional. But you gotta be a little colder. But but for the most part, they do fine work.
Yeah, I would agree with you too. And I think that sometimes the best reaction to that is just being an adult professional, like you said, astute professionalism, because they, these younger members definitely do not exhibit that. And that's, I think, I think that was one of the key takeaways from Sophie's uh uh chat log things is you just, you get to see that these guys are just pretty unhinged uh adolescents and.
They're just, yeah. It's, it's like having Twitter addicts on your, well, is exactly like having Twitter addicts on your city council because they are Twitter. Except Blue Sky now, but they were all Twitter, habitual Twitter users.
But no, I agree. I think that's the antidote is just cold professionalism and just saying like, that's, you're being ridiculous.
You're being ridiculous. I'm not playing these games, but I'm also not taking cute photo ops with you. Calm down.
Yeah, I, I agree with that too. I didn't really like that stuff that he's doing necessarily. And I don't know, it's getting pretty nitpicky, but sometimes it's just like the manner of it. It's a little too like wanting to be in the, in the feed, wanting to be in the trends and uh, I don't know.
Uh, yeah.
But yeah, I agree with the B rating.
And I think Olivia's done a good job following through on all of her campaign promises. She has been exactly the city councillor that she told people that she was gonna be. If you voted for Olivia Clark, you're probably happy with what you got. You should probably vote for her again. You know what I mean? Like, that's just what it is. It's, yeah. Um, uh Mitch uh has been the biggest transformation over the span of the year. Uh, he is a hard F. Absolute trash to your councillor. Um, I actually was worried in January that he was gonna be the most sane DSA member and that it was gonna be really hard to get him out in twenty twenty six because he was gonna be so damn likeable. Uh, that has proven not to be the case.
Who do you think is the most sane? I'm curious.
I mean, he might be the most dishonest, but he's the most sane and it's Samir. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
He does seem the most balanced probably.
Yes, and he sometimes makes arguments where I'm like, okay, you actually, you, you know that, that police have to exist. Hmm. Interesting. Like, yeah, yeah. There's some stuff in there where it's really sensible. Um, I certainly think he's the smartest of them. Um, no, Mitch is, is far dumber than I thought he was and he has had his foot in almost every controversy.
Yeah.
He's, he's out.
I have a, at some point I'll do it, but I actually have a list of all this stuff from this year that he's, it just seems like it's just a bad move after bad move. Like, I don't know.
That day one, he had a good showing. And then day whatever, two hundred and eighty, whatever this is, uh, terrible, terrible. He is involved in every single one of their minor scandals, which is gonna be great because again, to your point, like people can brush off the text, the texts. They can brush off the threat to PSU. They can brush off the Israel thing. But when you start stacking them all on top of each other and you go.
You go, where's the actual accomplishments here?
Get into in one year. Yeah, so hard F.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just go through what I'm gonna do. I'll, I'll go through mine of those. I would almost unchange those, except I think I give Eric a C. He's still doing okay. Uh, yeah, I think, I think Olivia is pretty solid as far as delivering on what she said she was gonna do. She's pretty unwavering. Um, yeah, Eric's just a little bit. My concern with him is like, like, I like what he does with housing. I like what he does with the finance committee, all that stuff, but he just gets a, he, I think he wants the limelight a little bit too much, which is a common thing. But you look at between him and Olivia, Olivia's not really interested in that as much.
No.
She's not interested in the photo ops and all this stuff and she still does that stuff, but it's just like, it's not a priority for her. She's way more focused on policy and her district. Um.
I started by saying Olivia was boring. I'm gonna end by saying Olivia is boring as a politician. As a human being, she's lovely. I'm just like, which is fine. I.
I think a, a, as a local elected, that's just like a better.
Yes.
You're being a better servant to your people. And that's kinda why I would knock Eric a little bit. He's getting pulled a little bit in that direction. He's doing a lot of like CNN hits and photo op stuff and um, I get it. He's a, he's a kind of a flamboyant dude. Like he likes, uh, he's a well dressed man. I've told, I told him that on the the thing on the campaign trail. I was like, this is, look at this guy. He's attractive dude and.
He's dash, he's a foodie, but also a Doritos guy. Strange, strange character.
And I was gonna say, yeah, so I'll do my, that was gonna be my gift to him. I'll give him a, I'll give him a C. I'll give him a bag of Doritos. I'll put the graphic up here. Um.
Have you tried the golden uh?
Different flavor?
Yeah, it's the new like, uh, is it golden sriracha? It's like a.
Oh, that sounds good. I know they have some sriracha flavored, but I haven't tried that.
It's good. It's good.
Um, yeah, I'll give him a bag of Doritos and then Olivia, yeah, I'll give a B. I'll give her a, what are those things called? I was asking you before the, the little praying figurine.
Precious moments.
Precious moments. Cause I don't know why. She just reminds me of one of those. She's a very pure wholesome kinda person.
I'm sorry, Olivia. Sorry.
And then, yeah.
Just swell.
Uh, Mitch, I would give a LinkedIn Pro subscription because I think he may need that sometime in the future.
Yes, yes.
And I would, yeah, I would agree. I'd give him an F. Um, I don't think uh he's doing very much, many good things for Portland at all. So um, um, yeah, I guess, I guess we'll go to D three here.
Yeah, let's do D three.
Um, I apologize, guys. I haven't really thought of it. I'm doing this off the dome for the most part. Um, I'll just start with the highest. Uh, Steve's kinda turned around a little bit for me. I'm happy with the second half of the year here, how, how he's doing. I keep calling him the uh, he kinda seems like the ultimate broker on the council. If, if, if Alana weren't the president, he kinda just seems like he's filling that space a little bit and we'll talk about that later.
Chatter about that, but yeah.
Um, so yeah, I think I would give him, man. I'm gonna say let's not do like minuses and stuff. I'll give him a B for now. That's maybe a little generous.
I like it.
Um, and then these are gonna be really difficult. I don't know. I'll, I'll give a, I'll do the gifts after the, but I'll give a uh, Angelita a D. I'm always gonna give her a little credit just because like, and it's painful for me to say this, but like she doesn't really have to do much. People might hate this, put your hate in the comments or, but I, I always say she gets, she got pretty girl privilege.
Sure.
I think that's a real thing. She could literally do nothing and just get reelected and that's probably what's gonna happen with her.
I hope not, but yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean.
And I'll give her, I'm giving her a little credit for like, she does do good social media. I agree with you that she's always uh, she's got charm.
Charming, Angelita. Charming.
She got charm. And then she, she does like, even if I disagree with almost all of it, she does, you know, introduce policy, which is the job of the new council.
That is, that is true. She's throwing stuff at the wall.
Yeah, whereas, you know, I don't, I can't necessarily say that for everybody, but you know, she's, she's trying to work stuff through the new system sometimes successfully. So I'll give her that. And then uh, Tiffany, I'll give her an F. Um, she's been at the bottom of my rankings for a long time. I just, um, I've, I've felt the same way since the rankings we've done in the past. Like I just don't feel like she's, has any place up there. Um, she seems to be doing it for pure vanity reasons to me. Um, and it seems like every election, like we talked about this, I think before we're recording, but she gathers a lot of money and she uses that on advertising to make herself kind of this household fixture, which she's never been before. Um, and I just don't really see what she contributes uh to the city or the council or the district. Um, so yeah, I'd give her an F. Um, let me see what I can give them. I would give uh Steve maybe some, like a legal pad or something like that as a gift, or Santa's giving these gifts, not me, but uh.
He seems like a stationary guy.
Yeah, something to you, you know, he's a.
Black wing pencils.
Yeah.
He seems like that guy.
He's up there, he, he always has like uh the lawyer kinda brain. The framework, putting everything through that. I'll give him that. And then uh, what do I give Angelie? I've never even thought about this. Or what would Santa give her? Um, maybe like a social media cleanse plan or something. Uh, I don't know if that's a gift.
Just one of those, one of the like the light phones, the phone.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. No, no apps. Yeah. No apps, maybe that. Or like maybe uh, yeah, I don't know. I was gonna say maybe like a, a Twitter verification check since she's not on there or her Truth Social or something. I don't know.
Expand your reach.
And then Tiffany, I didn't give me, or Tiffany, maybe just like a ruler if she is a teacher again or something, or a chalkboard. They don't even use chalkboards.
They don't even use chalkboards anymore. She's like a Chromebook. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, oh man, Tiffany. All right. I have, I need to reply to your rankings. Um, I'm gonna give Steve a C. Uh, it's, it's simple. I, I have a place in my heart for Steve Novick on a council with more adults. You give me like six or seven adults on that council plus Steve Novick, I think you're in for like a fun time.
Yeah.
I just, he's, he's just a little inconsistent for me to, like, I can't count him toward my seven. He's a half of what I want, which is fine. There's, there's room for that. Megan Moyer is not my ideal county commissioner, but on a county commission or on a county board with a good chair, I got a place for Megan Moyer on my county commission. I like some of the stuff she brings to the table. I don't like all of it, but I got, I got room for Steve Novick. So C. I, again, yes, on that budget pothole, he was, he was phenomenal. It was the old Steve Novick and he, he beat the hell out of people and it was wonderful. Um, Angelita is an F because I would have her as a D, but the thing is, if she would actually shut up, you'd be right. Like she could coast more, but she can't. She gets in her feelings and she, I mean, she needs to leave my content alone. It's not good for her. Like she needs to not pick fights. I'll give her this. She took a little social media cleanse after the giant pizza eating. We may get to that, but.
I was gonna bring that up to where they're eating.
Yeah, well, well, this, yes, this was, this was her anti ICE legislation and how she just got totally destroyed by the real communists. Uh, the, you know, she's like a diet caffeine free communist. These were like the full fat communists. Um, they just destroyed her and they pulled up examples of her fighting with them on social media recently. She took like a seven, six or seven days. She wasn't posting anything on Blue Sky or Instagram because I think she realized like, ooh, I need to stop fighting with people online. That might be a sign of growth, but the fact is she just, it's, it's just one battle after another with her. She is just constantly picking fights. She and Mitch are the two most destructive and most controversial members of city council. It's ridiculous. Uh, yeah, if, if she could rein her shit in, maybe, like maybe, but no, 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 no. Um, she's just, she can't. And if you get her upset, she, I, she can't let things go.
Yeah, she seems like an obsessive from what you're saying. I don't really follow her, her social stuff and uh, I don't know. She had the whole dust up thing with Dan and some people were saying they tagged me in there. I don't even get, I don't wade into the comments and all that stuff, but uh, but she just lives for that.
Yeah, she, she's too, she's too online. So that's the F for me. Um, and Tiffany Koyama Lane is an F, but just because to your point, there's nothing there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. The only thing I can give her props on is like, she has gotten better just about being vocal in meetings. I brought that up, I think in the six month thing, but but that's not like, you know, that's like a bare responsibility for anybody elected.
No, I mean, if I had a wish cast for your district, if I can only get one of them out, I would get out Angelita. I would leave Tiffany because she's less destructive on her own. Um, I just, no, she's awful at her job, but in a tolerably awful way. No, she's just dumb and bad at her job. That's all that it is. I'm sorry. Sorry, Tiffany. You're just dumb and bad at your job.
Yeah, I just, I have never understood it. And it's even between the two of them. You look at it and it's like, I could see Angelita having a political future. I don't see Tiffany. I just can't picture that. I don't know what that looks like at all.
Brand friendly, I guess. This was, she's the nice teacher, but, but it's, it's, it's largely a facade.
It's all optics. Yeah. And it's just like, you watch any given meeting and it's just like, oh my God, this is a train wreck. Like why is this person here? But um, yeah, so I guess, I don't know. I was gonna go maybe D one.
Or do we wanna go down in order and go to D two next?
Sure. I don't really care.
That's fine. Let's go D, let's get to D two and I'll serve. Um, uh, D two, uh, Dan Ryan is gonna get my only A.
Okay.
He's gonna get my only A. There've been some controversies, but Dan Ryan has found his lane. He's planted his feet and he's done what I needed him to do. I would have liked to have seen a little bit more of the stuff that he's been up to out of Eric and Olivia. He has picked his lane. His lane is small businesses, uh, Portland homeowners, uh, the tax. Small businesses, uh Portland homeowners, uh the tax base. He's basically like, how, how do I keep that tax base?
And he's been consistent about that.
He's been really consistent about that stuff. Um, I like Dan on a personal level, so like full disclosure, I just, I like the man. Uh, he's not a friend, but like I like him. Um, but yeah, I'm gonna give him my only A. Uh, Elana Pertle Guinea. Is gonna get a C and she's never gonna get higher than a C for me. There's just too much. Connection to the wrong organizations. I disagree with her politics too much. I think she was absolutely the right city council president. I think she was the right woman for the job. If she stayed on for the next sixteen years, I'd be perfectly fine with it. But I disagree with a lot of the things that she does and a lot of her logic and why she votes for things. And that's simply that, that's it. See. Uh, and then Samir Canall. Ooh. I think I'm gonna give him my only D for the DSA. I think he's gonna get the D.
Yeah.
He's the best of them and I do not like him, but he is the best of them. Uh, regardless of the chaos he pulled during the, the budget, there are moments of real. Like a visual attempt to work to some sort of compromise. Yeah, that's me on D two.
Okay. Yeah, I would uh, I would do a similar thing. I would give Dan probably a B.
Cuz he fired you.
Well, and I was gonna say, I don't, I don't know if this matters or it's controversial, but I'm, you know, I'm still, we're still friendly. Uh, I text with Dan. We just live in a political reality in the city that that was just not sustainable.
Sure, 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 sure.
For a lot of different reasons. There's a whole story there, but uh.
I'm just gonna make fun of it every chance I get.
Uh, but no, yeah, he's, he's super consistent. And one thing about him too, if you go back and even to when he was a commissioner. Maybe this is wa- one reason why he's a B is he has had, he has had a reputation of having. Maybe not the most traditional staffer picks.
Sure.
And I'm part of that probably. Uh, and 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 maybe part of that is like uh. That comes along with that is maintaining those relationships. I think he's just always struggled with having. Easier staffers to come by than some of these other counselors, but um, that's not like a huge issue. I just think that. I don't know. Like, it's hard for me to say he should stand his ground more because maybe I'm just only thinking of my particular thing. Because he is pretty consistent on most of that stuff and he did really stand his ground on this thing with this dust up with him and Angelita. And but yeah, he is really focused on the right things. One of the things we haven't even talked about is like, he, he's just really aware. That next year the budget's gonna be even worse and that's constantly on his mind. That's why he's talking about all this business stuff and.
Yeah.
The tax base and all that. Um, and I think that's the right place to be focused on. It's like, that's reality and that's gonna hit in, I don't know. Four months from now or whatever.
Because all those cuddly programs, all those programs we were talking about, all the nice, the rental, well, some of, a lot of the rentals, it's this county to be fair. But this is still gonna ripple outward.
Yeah.
Tax base shrinks.
Yeah, the tax, there's, and there's a lot, and he knows that there's a lot of compounding. It's the shrinking tax base. It's a lot of these like one time funded programs. It came from COVID. A lot of this stuff is kind of compressing and drying up and he, he, he's maybe the most aware person of that other than. Maybe Eric, um, or Olivia, you know, it's pretty.
Well, I may, I may have a surprise pivot there, but yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, but yeah, I'll give him that. I'll give Dan maybe like a um, I'm gonna say like a lobster. He mentioned uh. Eating lobster for Christmas, which I always thought was cool.
I don't really like turkey.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Not really, no.
Is there, do you have a different?
I kind of like.
Bird or like ham or something?
I like um, I like crab on Christmas.
Yeah, that sounds fantastic.
Yeah. It's must lobster.
So I'll give him a lobster, maybe a. Yeah, I'll give him lobster. Um. Uh, I'm trying to remember, uh. Yeah, I mean, I'd give Alana, I'd get an EPG. I was thinking probably a D. She was maybe more of a C before. But I think the last second half of the year in particular, it seems, seems like she's kind of. I don't wanna say capitulating, but just kind of like, like I didn't even know about the. Uh congratulatory thing, like did she actually congratulate the party of the DSA?
No, she congratulated Angelita Mario, specifically called out my colleague councillor Mario for her.
Well, that's.
Willingness to come to the table and.
That's more okay. I thought she was being like.
No, no, no.
DSA, congrats or.
I'm not sure she's ever even said DSA out loud.
Cuz yeah, that would be another probably violation. That's why I was thinking about that. But yeah, I, I think that she. Arguably has kind of lost her grip on the president role. She was, she's pretty consistent with that, but I don't know. It seems like as the year goes on.
I mean, they hammered her down.
Yeah, and maybe she doesn't wanna do it next year. I don't know. I don't know, but.
I don't think there's an avenue in which she can. I don't, I just don't think she has the votes, but.
That's a tough one, though. Maybe, maybe it is a C. I don't know. She's, she's, a lot of the voice she votes, I usually agree with. That's a tough one. C or D. Maybe I'll put in both of them. Uh, yeah, I was trying to think of what to give her. I mean, I'll just give her a gavel for now because uh she is the president. I don't know. That's really like more of a judge thing.
Like a symbolic gavel.
Yeah.
Yeah, have it on her mantle.
And then.
Seems like she has a mantle.
And then Samir, same thing. I'd probably do D. Uh, there are rare times when I agree with him and I do agree, like we've mentioned earlier, he's probably the most. Balanced version of the Peacock DSA group.
Yeah.
He seems like probably the, of all of them, may probably the most reasonable, like he could reason with them. That's a tough one to think about, but um, but yeah, I think uh. It's probably a D. Um.
Yeah.
Still very uh flamingly anti-police from what I know.
Oh, sure.
Like all of them are, but.
Sure, sure. Yeah, may just live in a reality where he realizes he's not gonna succeed.
Yeah.
Abolishing the police.
And I guess, yeah, you said earlier, he acknowledges, maybe we do need them, but.
I mean, I, I do think he's anti-police, but I just think.
He's out to punish them or.
Yeah, I think he's got an eight, twelve, sixteen year plan. Mitch Green, I think he's one hundred percent genuine. When he says, if you don't like what I'm doing, don't vote me back in. I'm not running for a long time. I'm kind of running for a good time a little bit like, and I think Samir Canall wants to stay in that seat. I think he's showing all the, all the signs that he does.
Yeah, I was thinking about that a second ago. He does seem like, you know, like I was saying, some of these other people like thinking about their political future. He seems like he has one. So that's a positive um, for him at least.
It moderates people, yeah.
Yeah, and as far as a gift, I would give him like either a knockoff or a real. This is Santa's money, not my, like a knockoff or a real Rolex. He might already have one. He's, he's a very flashy dresser.
He's a, he's got a.
And I've seen him wearing some real nice watches.
He's got a nice family. He's got a nice family.
But that, that's uh, what I do. So yeah, I guess we can go to D one.
D one, okay, so you're, you're serving.
Am I serving? What is that?
You, you, you go first and then, and then I'll, and then I'll retort.
This is so hard with twelve people. I'm just going through it in my head. Uh, I would start with. I'm gonna, you know what I'm gonna do is give a type as far as the letter grade between him and Candace and I'll probably do it. I probably do, actually, you know what? Let's, let's start with Loretta.
Let's start with Loretta.
I'm gonna give Loretta a C.
Yep.
I've generally, that's kind of where she's been at, like with the rankings and stuff we did. Uh, I think she can sometimes be a voice of clarity. Sometimes she can be a voice of chaos. It's hard to tell like when that's gonna happen. Uh, but. At least she's offering like positives in that environment sometimes. And. Yeah, I don't know. I always go back to like the county stuff is good experience to have, especially considering the other two members of that district don't really. Bring too much, but um, but yeah, I'd give, I'd give her a C. I guess we can talk about that in the next, in the twenty twenty six thing, but it's hard to tell like if she's gonna keep that seat. I don't really know. But yeah, I'd give her a C. I'd give Loretta maybe some. Nice office furniture or something. I was trying to think, cuz there is like the office controversy with all of them. I don't even know what's going on with that.
Nice ergonomic chair.
Yeah.
One of those like.
Or those ball seats or something. What are those called?
Imagine Loretta Smith sitting on a ball seat. I can imagine her in like a, like a really high end steel case chair or something, but yeah.
Ergonomic desk.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, and then, yeah, I would give. Uh, Jamie and Candace probably both a D. Or maybe one of them a D and an F. They're, they're, they're both not very favorable to me. Um, but I was gonna keep them in lock because they always vote in, in lockstep. Uh, yeah, there's just a lot of stuff. I did wanna mention, you know, the whole arson thing with her house. That was kind of a. Thing that seemed like she, and put it in the comments if you disagree with me, but it seemed like she jumped on that as a political violence thing. Which I was like, you know, that's a possibility. I, I didn't comment intentionally cuz I was like, I don't know what this is until I'm gonna know more. But now that we know, it seemed like this sort of a career criminal person that was uh living out there and had a long arrest history. It, it is an interesting kind of character thing for her for the year of.
Yeah.
In a lot of these Peacock guys, like they kind of immediately jump to the lowest political hanging fruit or the, the thing that's gonna give them the most. Uh, visibility and sort of popularity.
Yep.
I don't actually know what, if that ended up like backfiring or if she.
No.
Know what she did, but.
I mean, I think she got some goodwill for it, but I mean, yeah, nobody was really.
And it's a horrible thing to happen to your home. It just seemed like she was kind of blaming the investigation for a second or something.
She didn't trust the police to be doing a good enough job. And then the moment that they found out that it was a homeless black man, it was like, ooh, hold on, hold on, we need to have. This is, this is maturity, right? Just wait.
Yeah, just have patience.
You needed to wait a week. You needed to wait one week. Like because it was a traumatic thing that happened to her, but I mean, this was my emotional roller coaster. This thing was going to feeling really bad for her and being worried. To being less worried, still feeling really bad for her, to at the end being like, yeah, I feel kind of bad for her cuz it's a sad thing that happened, but man, she just like. Burned through my emotion, like my goodwill so quick with that crap.
Yeah.
Um, she got, she got the white glove treatment, which is what I want all Portlanders to get. I, I don't think that the police like. Um, gave her favoritism. I mean, they did. There is a woman who was murdered in my neighborhood, like right before that, and I don't think she got anywhere near her murder, got nowhere near the level of investigation. Because all the resources under Candace Avalos's house, which again, we should have investigated that. That was good that we investigated. It was good that we got to the bottom of it. Um, yeah, that guy is already back out on the street, by the way.
Oh, is that true? Okay, doesn't surprise me.
Judges have decided that there's just really no way to help this man because most of his crimes are fairly accidental. He's just very, very mentally ill.
The best place for him is on.
I mean, because we have no, yeah, yeah.
Um, I, no, I just bring it up too cuz it's, it's such an interesting, the political implications of it specifically in District One is like. If that was the outcome and now that it seems like that's the case, it's like, yeah, there's a huge problem in District One with this kind of. Behavior or criminality and like, it doesn't seem like that's something she or Jamie talks about. Maybe, I think Loretta talks about it a little bit more, but um. But yeah, and so it, I don't know.
So you're giving them both a D?
Both a D.
Okay.
I thought there was something with Jamie I was gonna mention. I totally, oh, oh, yeah, the, the staffer thing. I almost forgot about that, but yeah, that, that was a. A thing that happened. I've been telling people a lot, you know, at least I didn't abandon homeless person. Um. Because now that's like, I don't know. I feel like at least there's some level of accountability existing with these staffers. Um, I was a little, I'm, I'm upset like anybody is when anyone gets on paid leave after something like that and then they kind of. Review what's going on. But yeah, to me, it just shows that um. And I met other members of his team too, that he just is very, it's kind of a loose cannon as far as he hiring people and people he has on his staff. And he just is, I've always criticized him before of just, he doesn't really have like a good political barometer. Like it just seems like he's like. Either pulling stuff out of the air or some of these crazy staffers or Candace. There's not like a real independent view from him, so. Um, and then, I don't know. Candace, I think, just rides so much on her. Origins with the charter and her previous nonprofit and that kind of.
Yeah, her, or her origin story is what you get, yeah.
And I think that is kind of waning now. She got some criticism this year, I think, from the chat logs of not knowing, what was it? What tax compression is or something or, or not knowing.
Who Deion Sanders was. No, I'm sorry, I'm just being a jerk now, but she didn't, she didn't. It's fine. She's young. She's young. She's sort of young.
Yeah, it was kind of shocking, some of the stuff she didn't know, but um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which, okay, but then also I wanna build space that it's fine to not know things. You just gotta, you don't know them, so okay, yeah.
I agree. It's like, to some extent, if you wanna elect outsiders who aren't traditionally elected, maybe that's, maybe that's a good thing sometimes.
Better than just to completely pretend uh, like Michael Scott style, that you know what's happening. So when you know, yeah, yeah, it's fine. Um, okay.
And as far as a gift, I'll give them maybe a both a shared ADU or something.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Like an ADU for Jamie in Candace's backyard. Yeah, so that he could stop the next fire.
There you go. And they both, and they all have office space separate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, Loretta, I'm gonna give a C. This is, this is a very tenuous C. I, I don't like Loretta on city council. I just don't, I don't like a lot of her decisions. I can't stand a lot of the things that she does. Um, I, her grandstanding. Her pettiness with the mayor. There are so many reasons why I would give her a D and this is what captures her back to a C. Tax base, economics. Giving a crap what Portland looks like in fifteen years. She does. We need that so badly and we do get it with Loretta Smith. Loretta Smith is thinking about that. Shrinking tax base. She is thinking about the food deserts that are starting to form in D one because grocers are leaving. She is mindful of these things. She, one of her best moments of the last couple of months was in the debate over the um. Uh, Mario won the amendment to defund the impact reduction. She said, you know, I'm gonna paraphrase, but I got it pretty close. Uh, not a single district, or so not a single precinct in District One, majority voted for the parks levy. Not a single one of them was a majority yes for that parks levy because they don't have the money.
What, not a single what in District?
Like the precincts.
I got you, I got you.
Yeah, and all the precincts, you look at every precinct level data.
That is, it's surprising. I mean, it makes sense, though.
It does. They're working class immigrants that, yes, they don't.
They don't want another tax.
They just can't. They love their parks, but they just, you just pile on top of, you know, yeah, yeah. Tax on top of tax on top of fee on top of tax. They can't do it anymore. So they majority voted no. They were the only district in the city that majority voted no, although D four, my district was. Pretty close in some ways, um, because it just, it just eats at you. Uh, and that was good. That was a great little bit of. Uh, rhetoric from her. They don't have the money. She ca- she cares in her way about D one, so she gets a C. Like, there's many, many, many things.
And I was thinking, we've, you know, I've talked about that a lot. She's, she's probably the only one in that district really looking out for.
Yeah, yes. Um, I'm gonna give Candace Avalos a D. And the reason I'm gonna be so optimistic here, I don't think Candace Avalos is a good city councillor in any capacity. But I think that she could someday be. She just makes better friends and makes better decisions if she gets over herself and her self-image issues and her obsession with the. Idea that everybody is way tougher on her because of insert one of ten reasons. No, girl, you've been given a lot of advantages in life because for some reason people find you deeply charming.
It's been like three years of green lights.
And they want you to be the next thing. So like, get over yourself and then become that next thing, but you gotta cut the DSA. You gotta, I. Mario won. I go back to Mario one, the impact reduction. Debate, she put forward a friendly amendment. To get money back to Prosper Portland because she knows that Park Rose is gonna lose one of their last remaining grocery stores. Mario rejected this as a friendly amendment. Avalos moved it anyway. It failed because the DSA voted against it. And there was a resounding screw you to D one. It was, I mean, that was like one of the saddest moments of that evening.
Yeah, it's actually not a bad idea. I didn't know that she introduced that.
It's not a bad idea. It was, and so she left shortly after and the final vote, Tiffany Crayamalene calls back in to vote. Candace Avalos didn't call back in. I think that was a heartbreaking night for her and I hope.
Remember that now that you mention that cuz she was gone by that point.
And I hope that she learned there, they need your vote for stuff, Candace. They don't care about you. They don't. That you're not in their big plan nationally, in their national agenda. Um, no, like, this is where Candace Avalos could learn. She could grow. She could become a better city councillor. She has got to cut ties with this local progress, working families party. She's gotta get over this crap. And just be a Democrat and ju- but whatever.
That's a good point. When you mentioned that, like she would probably, I don't wanna say skyrocket, but her popularity would increase quite a bit. If she was just way more kind of reasonable.
Moderated, pragmatized, grew up a little bit. Yeah, I think there's something there. I don't think she will. But I think there's this spark there and I would be really, I would be overjoyed to be wrong.
Yeah.
Uh, Jamie Dunphy is a hard F. Jamie Dunphy is our worst city councillor, just from a stance of, he does nothing. There is no purpose. He could skip every single meeting for the rest of the year and we would not notice.
Right.
When he speaks, it is the. When he speaks, it is the dumbest crap. He is either siding with Candace Avalos or he is going on one of his unhinged like anti Live Nation, anti Walmart rants. I don't know who is won over by this. His rant in support of the AI algorithmic rent ban was so deranged. He's just
I didn't watch it. Maybe I'll clip a piece.
You should. He doesn't care about our economy at all. He's basically of the opinion that if you're just some corporation and you're just here to make money, I don't even want you in Portland. Like, it's this stupid and childish idea that if we get all the Walmarts and the Targets and the, and the property management companies and the big corporations out and it's all, just get them all out of here. They're just
And the Walmarts are already gone too.
Yeah, this is just capitalism is failing us and we just gotta like that we're gonna be fine. It's gonna, it's, it's leading us right off a cliff. It's just such a childish view of how cities work and how economies work. Uh, so yeah, just a hard F because I, there's no upside to Jamie Dunphy. There's just no
Yeah. Well, not to say, he does seem like a real, maybe the top kind of anti-business person. I've just been calling it anti-economy because a lot of these people, like, they don't even like work that into their view or their framework of what they're doing. And it does seem like that a lot of the time. He just doesn't even have that like in his head about anything about, you know, like, it's just like, everything will be fine. Doesn't matter. And one of the things that I was curious about, curious about was like, do you feel like Candace shifted with that amendment you brought up because of the Fred Meyer? I know the Fred Meyer thing was like kind of a big deal.
And she screwed up on that. She was
And she got some flack for making fun of that.
People hated it.
Going to Winco or I can't remember what she said.
Yeah, just go to Winco. Yeah. We, we were, you know, real East Portlanders shop at Winco. Girl, you're not even a real East Portlander.
Yeah.
You've lived there for, but whatever. It's fine. You know, if the districts adopted her, then the district adopts her, but she needs to grow into that. No, I, I think I think there's something there. There's a realization that you can't be anti-business. That's not going to benefit working class people because the job, the jobs leave, the restaurants, the grocery stores, they all leave. And you also, you know, when what Keith Wilson took them to, was it?
Oh, uh, Olive Garden?
Oh, it was Olive Garden. They like dunked on that at first and I'm like, oh, let's show our snootiness. Let's show our
That's a horrible look for D1. It's like, shout out to Olive Garden. I mean, you get unlimited whatever you want there.
This episode brought to you by Olive. No, uh, listen, I just stop being snobs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Stop being snobs. Um, so no, there's, there's potential there for Jamie. There's no potential. Get rid of him.
Yeah, I was saying, it almost seems like in Jamie's head, like he just almost like thinks the city is just all music venues and that's the only thing he's focused. I know that's like his whole thing, but
Jamie Dunphy is a stereotype of a white Portland male who has benefited, like, let's be a little woke for a second. He has benefited financially from being born, who he is, where he was, when he like to the family, right? He inherited a house. He already owned a home. He inherited another home. Now he's got two properties that a home he inherited skyrocketed in value. He feels really guilty about like acquired wealth and comfort. You know, his, his wife has a successful career, right? Like they're, they're doing fine for themselves. And there, there really does seem to be something. He just feels so bad about that. And I know these dudes in Portland, they're these like
Internal guilt or
Yeah, they're like bearded metalheads who work in tech and have like nice families and white picket fence houses and they feel terrible about it. They're just so, it's so awful. And it's like, oh, I'm so sorry that your house has a combined income of $250,000 and you can take vacations to Big Sur or whatever. Like, I'm really, I feel really bad for you. Like, get over it. Like, we're not here for your therapy. Just like run the city. There, there, there's a lot of us who aren't as comfortable as you. And I, I'm not, I'm not served by you feeling guilty. That's not helping me.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Um. And there was something else I was gonna say. Oh, yeah, he almost makes it like um difficult to remember that he did work for Nick Fish, like, or that he worked in government at all. It just seems like, like, what the hell? Like, he would never know that just looking at him because he's kind of I've said it before, dis shovel. I don't know what the right word is. Like, he just seems unprepared and like a lot of these speeches, like you said, are just kind of like
I think he gets weird and I think he gets really passionate. He gets just really in his feelings and he's, he'll like kind of start his prepared notes and then he'll kind of set them down and go, I'm just gonna talk from the heart. But the heart is like Walmart and Ronald Reagan, like, it's just the most stereotypical Portland. Yeah.
That stuff is just so, it's probably the easiest, laziest political thing you could do is just go, you know, I hate corporations. They're all, you know.
Now I want to kick all the Starbucks out of downtown. Okay.
Um, let's see here. Is it, let's go, I guess, quickly through. Man, who was I gonna give? I wrote down, I wanted to give, maybe it'd be Jamie. I was gonna give somebody one of those old timey sleep hats. You know what I'm talking about? And I think that's because I was watching
Ebenezer Scrooge style.
Yeah, I was watching an old Disney movie the other day or something and I
Were you gonna give it to Candace? Because she sometimes looks like she's nodded off.
I wrote it down and I didn't even put who.
She sometimes looks like she's nodded off at the, so what are we talking about?
But yeah, I guess we can quickly go through, we talked about council president a little bit, but let's do, uh, is there anything else we want to say about mayor, city manager, county?
Let's talk, let's talk about city manager because old Mikey Jordan's getting replaced.
Yeah.
On purpose. Season nine, he didn't do anything wrong. He agreed to stay on for one more year.
And they're, they've been doing the search for like a year, right?
They've got it down to three candidates. Um, we got a, we got an old time Portland player, was part of the Portland structure.
And then I think somebody from Colorado and Texas, right?
We have Fort Worth. Yes. And we got Colorado. So this is tricky. Mitch Green has weighed in and has all but said, there's no way he's supporting our Portland guy.
Okay.
The Portland candidate is not going to get supported by the DSA because he worked for Ted Wheeler. Ted tear gasm, kill them all, secret Hitler Wheeler. These kids, these kids and their hyperbole. Uh, I'm not a big Ted Wheeler fan, but like, come on. They're not gonna support him and in some ways I kind of agree.
I know a lot of people want like an outside perspective.
Yes. Portland needs to get over itself. Portland. I think I've said this on here before. I say it in public a lot. One of the quickest ways for me to offend Portlanders is to compare us to Cincinnati. There's nothing wrong with Cincinnati, but if I say Portland is a city on the scale of Cincinnati, people lose their minds. They're like, how dare you? We are fancier than that. We are better and cooler and hipper and prettier. No, we're not. No, we're not. And that's okay. Cincinnati is a lovely city.
Yeah, I was like, it doesn't strike me as offensive.
It's not, it's not offensive. It's not meant offensive at all. I like Cincinnati. Would I move to Cincinnati? Yeah, maybe, like, maybe, like legitimately, there's nothing wrong with Cincinnati. It's a little landlocked. I mean, we're landlocked, but we're at least close to a coast. There's nothing wrong with Cincinnati. There's nothing wrong with San Diego. These are nice places, right? You don't gotta be, well. But um, but Portlanders need to get over themselves. We need to realize that we're a small American city of not a tremendous amount of import. And I don't mean that to dunk on us. There's just nothing wrong with it. So the idea of bringing in somebody from a smaller city in Colorado or Fort Worth, somebody who isn't completely full of themselves, somebody who maybe hasn't totally bought into the Portland hype and might look at the $8 billion budget and go that's too big of a budget though, right? That's a little intriguing. I will say there's three candidates, right? We got a Portland candidate, we got a Colorado candidate, and we got Fort Worth candidate. The candidate from Fort Worth is Public Safety. She's been in public safety for years. There's no way the DSA is supporting her because she definitely believes the cops should exist.
Related to law enforcement.
She's very friendly with the, you know, uh, police like associations down there. Um, for both of those outside candidates, this would be a huge salary increase. Huge, huge.
Yeah, because I was trying, I was telling somebody the other day and I was trying to remember what Mike's like in the 300 range or 400 range.
Like right at 300. The salary range here, I think, starts at like 284. Is the minimum they would be coming in at. And both of these people are making six figures, but they're, I think, both more down like 115, 160, stuff. Yeah. So this would be a huge salary increase um, for, for either of them. I, you know, it'll be interesting to see. I dug into all three. DSA is gonna go for the Colorado guy for sure.
Okay, seems, yeah.
I couldn't find anything terrifying about him. Um, I mean, it's a big, it's a big jump in pay and responsibility for this dude. I hope, you know, I hope he's up for it. What we need is somebody a little mean.
Yeah.
Because we voted for the end of the commissioner system. We voted to bring the city council into a system where we have the executive branch and the council, and they gotta play with each other, but these are not commissioners anymore. And they want to be commissioners really bad, especially Loretta. And Angelita. So we need a city manager that's going to be willing to lock horns with them and say, no. Yeah, it's not gonna, we're not gonna play like that. Um, so I am a little worried that somebody brought in with their pay doubled is gonna be like, well, I don't want to rock the boat.
Sure, yeah. A little uncomfortable in that. Yeah. No, I, I mean, I agree with pretty much all that. Yeah, because I've heard before that, you know, a lot of people have tons of issues with Mike Jordan, but uh, I think one of the main criticisms is that he's been part of the system for so long, he can't really see the issues with it. Yeah, but I agree too that, yeah, he, he wasn't the most forceful kind of thing. And I think somebody who really sets the boundaries of like, here's what, here's what we're doing for the city. Here's what the mayor and the city manager are gonna do and this whole branch. And then here's what you do. And really define those boundaries. And I don't think he's doing the best job of that, maybe occasionally, but yeah, I agree. Um, if one of those people could do it, and I don't really even have a preference. I would probably default to one of the out of state people, I guess. Just for the fresh perspective kind of thing. But yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have a hard preference really.
Yeah, just on the surface, I'm more taken with the candidate from Fort Worth, Texas. I think she's got an interesting background, but I mean, again, I couldn't, I couldn't find any controversies. I couldn't find any social media comments that led me to believe that one of them had been involved in some sort of weird scandal or that they were like, you know, yeah, I mean, so that's good.
And you'd think the city hopefully would do that already. That's why they're narrowing these down. Yeah.
I'll, I'll say this. Whoever gets the job is gonna be who Keith Wilson wants in the job.
Yeah.
People are underestimating Keith Wilson's ability to get exactly what he wants. Love it, love it or hate it, that dude gets what he wants.
Yeah. Yeah, we can get into, we can we go for another 30 minutes here or so, but um let's, we talked a little bit more about 2026 stuff, like we were just about the incoming city manager, uh, but I wanted to quickly go over this stuff because, I mean, it's yes, it'll take like two minutes, but I just wanted to mention that. You know, if you're listening to this and you have a legal background, I'm gonna dig into this more, but um I think there's a real legal challenge that could be made to the Peacock block, the DSA block, because if you look in the charter and I'll put it right here, it's literally a sentence saying that not, and this is in the election section of the charter, but not only the electeds themselves, but their entire office are to be nonpartisan. And when I see that, I'm just like, well, that's not how we've been operating this year. And there's probably countless examples, like the thing you mentioned earlier with the press conferences, just a small one. But in a lot of jurisdictions, that would be a pretty big violation of putting a party meeting on the website. That's immediately something you should never do. So I just am floating that because like, I think there's a real angle there for people if they're interested in that. And I would, I would pose that argument to them right now. The issue is like, to me, our current city attorney team, they just, they're almost on a mission to like not you know, do their job and pu- and put barriers or boundaries in front of these councillors sometimes, it seems like.
Learning opportunities.
So that's kind of the hurdle. I mean, there's always other ways you can go to the state. There's other places that could, that could challenge that. But I just wanted to introduce it. I didn't even think about it until the past few weeks. I was like, most city charters have that in there. And I wanted to confirm it and it's definitely in there and it's very clear.
Well, let me leave a breadcrumb trail. So in the leaked chat logs, Candace Avalos says something to the tune of hey, guys, don't worry. I'll have Andreas put together a platform for us.
I remember this.
Andreas is almost certainly Andreas Oswald. Uh, who is, uh, well, he's in a lot of different organizations. Um, he's a registered lobbyist for a number of those organizations. Uh, but he's wrapped up in Portland for all and Basic Rights Oregon and yeah, a lot of these groups, right? He's, he is in the room and a lot of the endorsements are getting decided. So Andreas Oswald, then I think the next week after that chat, I went and pulled their lobbyist reports. Uh, he met with Samir Canal and Candace Avalos. Now Candace had just said, don't worry, y'all. I'll have Andreas put together a platform for us. Great. So if you check the forms, because they have to submit forms when they meet with lobbyists, uh, or consultants, sorry, they, they met with them as a consultant. They checked on their consultant forms uh, that this consultancy was over a future political campaign and not having to do with city business. But Candace Avalos and Samir Canal are not running for reelection until 2028.
Long time.
And Candace Avalos had just said, I'm gonna meet with Andreas about setting up a platform for us around the budget. So that's an interesting place for somebody to, I don't know, file some public records requests.
And I, I just like, to me, it's like 100% clear and maybe you too. I just know from the people that are in these offices that are hired, they're absolutely in contact with the DSA as a party constantly.
Yes.
And that is
Aside from just the registered lobbyist meetings.
Yeah, that is 100% not what the charter says. Like, it's totally against the charter, which Candace, you know, had a hand in writing. I also wanted to say real quick that it is, um I was looking through the whole election section of that. And you probably already know this, but the the way it describes rank choice is like, the charter is just kind of a mess. Like, aside from the thing I just mentioned, which is one sentence in one chapter. It doesn't even define the 20, what is it? 25%? 20%?
Oh, yeah, the 25.
It just says a threshold. And I think they meant to do that to kind of, if they end up changing how many people are in a district or if there's instances where there's an appointment or something. But that is, to me, just an incredibly unclear charter when it can't even specify the actual percentage threshold. It just says a threshold to be determined by the number of blah, blah, blah. It's just really convoluted. And anyway, I was just complaining about the charter.
Jamie, Jamie Dunphy didn't achieve 25%. Yeah, on, under a tighter written charter, there would have had to have been some sort of runoff
Right.
Election in D, in D1 only, right? Every, every other
He actually didn't even hit that.
Never hit 25%. And this was something he was a little embarrassed about at first and
Yeah, that, even that's weird though, because it's like, so then the threshold's different per, per seat.
Yeah, this is the looseness of like, if, yeah, yeah. So a tight, a tighter, a tighter um charter, yeah, would have
Yeah, I was just kind of stunned that it wasn't, it basically forces you to do the math and it's not spelled out in the charter. So anyway. Um, yeah, let's get into some 2026 stuff. Because we're kind of running out of time here.
So D3 and D4 are running.
Yeah, D3 and D4 are running. Uh, you know, this whole year, basically, I have known that there's, there's been more activity on the D4 side. You know, you have kind of floated your name. Eli's back in the race.
Eli's back in the race for me.
I forget the other guy's name, Jeremy. He's like a DSA guy.
Jeremy Bosale Smith.
I think those are the only three non-incumbents that I know of. You might know some other folks.
Goldsmith.
Oh, uh, John?
Yes.
Yeah, he's running again. Yeah, he's, he's a I definitely don't agree with him on everything. He's a friendly guy. I follow him on Instagram. He's a character.
He has a strange, strange set of politics, which I find kind of fascinating. Yeah. Yeah, but he is very friendly.
He'll, yeah, and I guess he's, uh, yeah, I mean, he's posting all the stuff that he's running again. I haven't seen like on small donor or anything, but he'll probably run.
No, he told, he told me to my face that he was running again. Um, and, and that's fine. And then it's, it's great. I'm, I think Samir had theorized that we're gonna have a much smaller candidate pool this time. I don't know that that's gonna be true.
That's a good question. I've, I've still been saying that. I mean, for the pace they're going at now, it seems like it'll be a lot smaller, but I, the thing is, January, February, March, people are really gonna start coming out of the woodwork. So we'll see.
So this is the thing. If the system is working, it should be smaller.
Yeah.
If we've got some problems, it's gonna be really big again. The theoretical is that the only reason it was that giant bonanza the first time is because it was a new thing and people really thought that, oh, anybody could win. Anybody cannot win. That is not a realistic portrayal of the situation. You still need a lot of endorsements, a lot of name recognition and a lot of financial backing. You still do.
Right. Particularly, I was gonna say, particularly if, you know, because there were a lot of people who just did the bare minimum of what you need to be a candidate. I don't think that there's any real pathway for those folks to win, which sucks, but that's just
It's just what it is. And then if you're somebody like John Walker, who rejects the uh, campaign match system.
Small donor, yeah.
The small donor election is abhorrent to me. Um, i- if I run, if I use it, I'll make a promise right here on this podcast. I will put a whiteboard up in my office if I win with the total amount of taxpayer money I use to get into office. And I will figure out a way to earn Portland savings to pay that off because I will view it as a debt. I think the small donor election is abhorrent. I think it's a disgusting system.
And by the way, it's, yeah, it's increased right from nine to one.
10 to 1. It's, it's, no, it's so abusable. It's so flawed. It's just an ugly, ugly, ugly waste of our money. Fine. It doesn't accomplish the thing that it set out to accomplish, which is to try to make a Daniel DeMello. Fight. It doesn't accomplish the thing that it set out to accomplish, which is to try to make a Daniel DeMello or a John Walker more electable. And in fact, it just takes a big, supported, union-backed candidate, like a Tiffany Koyama Lane, and just makes it easy for her to generate a ton of taxpayer money.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I could not agree more. And I've actually never thought about it in that particular way, but yeah, it, it almost just took the previous problems with big money in the old system and just like amplified it of just like, so all the people that are getting big money anyway, they're just getting even more money.
Just getting even more money.
So.
It's just ballooning these races. It's silly and it's wasteful and it's ugly.
I would just, yeah, I'll say real quick, I do feel, I have some more optimism in D four. I'm really glad Eli's running again.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people, I've said this a lot, I think Mitch is really at risk of losing his spot. Um, Eric possibly is too, and you know, that'll be interesting, cuz him and Eli were neck and neck for a lot of rounds of voting. Um, I think Olivia's pretty safe. I don't think she's going anywhere.
Very, very safe.
Um, so that's kind of my outlook for the district.
In D three, Steve's pretty safe.
Yeah, yeah, and we can go to D three. Uh, I was gonna mention real quick, I'm gonna have, uh, I'm trying to remember his last name. Uh, let me look it up here on my calendar. Uh, but there, there is a new D three candidate. I was waiting forever to have anyone jumping.
Heart?
Huh?
Are you having heart on?
No, no.
Gotta have heart.
It's, it's a ways off, but I booked it, uh, Tom Solit, he's the guy.
Oh, yeah.
Who runs the Asian American Town Instagram. He's a Korean gentleman. Interesting background. He told me he's really interested in small business, so we're gonna, I'm gonna have him on the show, and I was just delighted that anyone is jumping in.
Yeah.
D three officially, because I haven't seen, I haven't seen or heard of anyone aside from the, the incumbents, so.
There's all sorts of whispers, right? There's all sorts of whispers. There's people trying to bully past candidates into running again. Those people are really resistant. I understand D three was a nightmare race.
Yeah, and I haven't really talked to any, I haven't asked Daniel or anyone like that. Uh, I think I asked Harrison Cass if he was gonna run. He's, doesn't seem interested.
No.
I don't think Kesia is going to.
Kesia's told me she's a hard no, which is fine.
Yeah, and it's a hard decision for a lot of people, uh, but yeah, I was delighted that at least one person's jumping in. I think, yeah, as far as vulnerability, I think, yeah, Steve and Tiffany are probably the most vulnerable. I don't know even to what degree that is, but
Yep.
And as painful as to say, like I said before, I think Angelita could literally do nothing, and she'll just coast again, in again.
Okay, this, this is where we may disagree. So, so this is a theory that I have. My, this is my two thousand people theory. Um, so I think that Mitch, Tiffany, Angelita, probably have about two thousand really, really dedicated people. And these two thousand people will get you to your full campaign match, right? Like, if you got, you can move a mountain with two thousand dedicated fans.
Seems like they've probably activated them already.
Oh, yeah. Yes, you can move a mountain with two thousand, uh, dedicated, activated fans. You really, really can. You could be a successful writer. You can do a lot of things with two thousand people. You can't get on city council necessarily. Two thousand people is not enough to put you in a seat. You need eight to ten.
It's like, you need eight thousand more.
Yeah, you need eight, you need like eight, yeah, they, let's say eight thousand more. Um, they're gonna have to run on their records. So the question is, those two thousand people are definitely still voting for all of them. So I, I, regardless, they're gonna have a minimum. They're gonna have a floor of, of votes that they get. My question is, how many of the eight thousand they convinced last time that they were normal, pro-union, progressive candidates are gonna look at this never-ending list of minor and sometimes major controversies and go, damn, that's really, that's a mess. I don't wanna vote for that. And they are gonna have to run on Keith Wilson's record. Because we will be able to divide all the candidates down the middle into two groups. The group who thinks that Keith Wilson, again, totally agree or somewhat agree, is not a monster, and the camp that thinks that Keith Wilson is a monster, which is a fantasy world. And I think they're gonna have to run on the absurd things that they've said about Keith Wilson's plan.
Point, yeah. I hadn't factored that in, cuz it is like a growing division, and, and a lot of people still support Keith.
And that's regardless of what I end up doing, that's gonna be my job over the next year, is to make sure that every single Portlander I can possibly reach knows. Some of the people on this stage think that Keith Wilson is a murderous cretin. That's delusional. Don't vote for people that don't believe true things. Like, again, agree or disagree, vote for adults, vote for people that live in the same reality you occupy. Stop voting for people who think that Keith Wilson is building death camps. That is, that's
So far from reality.
That's Obamacare death panel type craziness, right? Let's, let's not do this. Um, it's just so far from reality. So that's the good news.
Yeah, no, those are, I hadn't thought of those. And I also think, yeah, obviously also that, in addition to what candidates are competing for that, you know, new candidates, it's gonna be like, okay, well, with all this baggage that you just talked about, then there's this other fresh person over here.
Who doesn't have.
That can be real competitive.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. And you may have somebody, you know, what if you had a Mingus Maps run?
That's a good point. I didn't even thought of him jumping in.
Mingus Maps couldn't win mayor.
He'd probably easily, pretty easily get a counselor's spot.
Pretty easily.
Yeah.
Now, the question is, would he take Steve's, or would he take Tiffany's? I think he'd take Tiffany's, actually, but we'll see.
Yeah, and this is something, it may, maybe make me sound like an idiot, but every time I start thinking about it, I'm like, cuz I'm so stuck to the seat-for-seat way of doing it, but it's just the top three.
It's just the top.
It's just the top three. So it's weird because you could, obviously, if you get reelected, they're gonna retain the same office and stuff, I would think, unless we're that stupid that they have to like redo that, but, but yeah, it's just strange because you could end up with one of these people retaining their spot, or zero, or two, or three. I'm, I'm not saying any of these will happen, but it's just a very different.
Yeah.
You know, whoever gets the top three most, that's it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. That's it. That's the perfect, I think, I think you're right. You don't sound like an idiot. I think people forget, like, there's the talk of, okay, Max, how you feeling about Eli re-entering in D four? Doesn't that screw you over, or does that screw Eric over? It's the top three.
Cuz you're not directly challenging an individual. It's just like.
And honestly,
Get the votes, you know?
If any district could elect three moderates, it's D four. It might be D one.
I totally agree.
There's no chance that three moderates get in in this district. Sure, that's fine, but it's not like there are hard and fast lanes.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand D four residents didn't rank a city council candidate, right? Mitch Green got ten thousand votes. So that's more, like, we, we look at the numbers and you go, yeah, I think there's absolutely an avenue where there's an Olivia, Eric, Eli contingent. I think there's an avenue where there's a, a me in there, whatever. Um, I don't, I don't think that there's this, this prophesied, there must be a progressive on the, yeah, I don't, again, I think Mitch Green's gonna get two to five thousand votes. I don't think there's any way to keep Mitch Green from getting two to five thousand votes. None of the numbers I just listed are enough to get onto council, though. The question is, can you cost him three thousand votes? Can you push him into the number four bracket, and then it's not worth talking about? Um, yeah, so, and I think that's why, that's why these DSA candidates are in a more precarious place than they maybe wanna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, one thing I was gonna say, you just jogged my memory about, like, you know, these two thousand kind of dedicated people. Um, from what I know, they've kind of like activated them, and what these guys do is they, they know the system very well.
Yeah.
Um, they max out the pop, max
As quickly as possible.
Small donor donation, and I think it's like fifteen hundred dollars or, or five hundred, I can't remember. Um, but they end up getting ten times that, or whatever it is, so. Um, they, their game with that stuff is incredibly focused, and they're doing it like already. Um, so it's just interesting to see that they, I don't know, they're, they're very, they know, they're very aware of all that, they do all that, and I agree with what you're saying too of like, that's a good amount of people, and they raise a lot of money from that, but that's not ten thousand votes.
Not ten thousand votes. This is, yeah, and this is the thing, this is why the DSA is so good at this public matches, because they have giant group chats, they have meetings, they have a, they have dues-paying members, and they can say, all right, it's everybody's job. Remember your job when you get home.
Donate.
To donate between five and fifteen bucks to Angelita this evening, and then you, it's, imagine if the Timbers Army, I mean, the Timbers Army would never endorse a candidate, but imagine if the Timbers Army decided that Eric Zimmerman was their dude, and the Timbers Army was able to reach out to the whole Timbers Army and go, if everybody gives Eric Zimmerman five dollars today, today, we put him over the match threshold, and we, you know, ten times his, like, this is what you get with, you get a huge social network with the DSA. That's why they're so good at it.
Get with partisan organization. Cuz that's literally what it is.
That's, that's why, in fact, there is a rule against the Timbers Army doing something like endorsing a political candidate, because they are a, you know, nonprofit of a different type. Yeah, we have like campaign finance laws and nonprofit and tax laws for reasons.
It's one of the reasons I was pointing that out. To me, it's, it's just a little sus to be, cuz I, I look on Orstar all the time, and you can see, this was probably a month or two ago. You can start to see these, lo- in my view, large donations coming into these guys that are the legal, uh, or the top legally matched amount.
Yep.
So they're just, they're very aware of that, and these are like, they're wealthy friends that just start donating as soon as they can to get that going. Um, and, but, but like I said, I agree with you that, like, that's, that's a small base that's probably not enough to win, but it gets them a lot of money.
Gets them a lot of money. Yep.
Um, let me see, what else is, what else we got here? I mean, I had a lot of other stuff, uh, county. Um, I'll just say real quick, the chair is up for reelection. There's no universe in my mind that JVP would win that. I think she's got uh, some real competitors coming out, uh, from what I know, Sharon Myron, uh, I'm blanking on, uh, the other, uh,
Shannon Singleton?
Sh- Shannon's rumored to run, but what's, what's the, the current commissioner? Uh, why am I blanking? She's my district commissioner.
Julia Brim Edwards.
Julia Brim Edwards, so all three of them, to me, right now, are kind of, basically, they're throwing their hat in. It's pretty early, so a lot of them aren't officially doing that, but but if all three of them do, uh, to me, there's no way that JVP beats one of them. Um, they're, they're all more accomplished than her and, and just better leadership than her, so that's kind of what I feel about that. I don't know. It will be the first ranked choice, but, um, that's single winner, so it's not, you know, incredibly complicated.
Yeah, yeah, it's not multi-member districts or anything, no single transfer. Yeah, 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 oh, yeah. Um, I think, yeah, this, county's gonna be tricky cuz county's two things. You need a good chair. You also need a chair that is going to immediately give up a lot of their power.
Yeah.
Because we are never gonna fix the county problems with the chair being as powerful as a chair is, right? It's like having a king.
Yeah.
You have a really good king, and if that king has a shitty kid, you're in trouble next generation, right? This is the problem. Uh, Kefory was a bad county chair. She passed it off to JVP, who's been a bad county chair. But the, but their badness is amplified by how powerful the seat is. It's the single most powerful seat in Multnomah County. That's gotta stop. We have to change that. And I think, again, I'll say something nice about Meghan Moyer, a person that I voted against and will continue to vote against. She is open to making that chair less powerful. I think that Shannon Singleton, in her current position as a commissioner, is open to that. The question is, would Shannon Singleton still be open to downgrading that if she were the chair? You need to put, we need to think about putting somebody in that chair who is willing to give up a bit of power for the future betterment of, of Multnomah County. To me, that's gonna be Sharon Myron. But I'm a ride or die with Sharon Myron. That's just where, that's just where I live. Um, uh, I'm, I'm skeptical of, I'm skeptical of Singleton. I'm skeptical of Julia Brim Edwards, but anybody, any of them is better than Jessica Vega Peterson. They're all better choices, and I think you're right, with that many powerful women running against her.
It's just, they're, they're just better, more coherent leaders, even, even as, you know, like, I agree with you. I, I, cuz I wasn't really like picking a favorite, but yeah, I think as a leader, Sharon's probably the strongest. Julia is kind of surprisingly kind of, um, muted as far as like a voice sometimes. Like, she talks a lot, but it's just not really forceful or like, um, uh, what's the word? Um, assertive enough. Um, and and then Shannon, I think, just would be just super competitive with her background, and now that she's had a, kind of a term as a commissioner, uh, I think they all offer way more than somebody who basically, you know, patented the word boofing.
Yeah.
Or, you know, she, like, JVP just has so many negatives against her.
Yeah.
The ambulance thing, I mean, record overdoses, the handing out the booth kits and the tents and
Blocking anything she doesn't like. Yeah, I, I, I wanna compare, I wanna just contrast Julia Brim Edwards against Keith Wilson for a second.
Yeah.
Problem with Julia Brim Edwards is that, um, you know, Keith Wilson, when faced with the criticism that he's actually some secret conservative, dastardly villain, says, okay, yeah, that's not true, and he moves on with his day. This is exactly what you need to do. And I think Julia Brim Edwards, unfortunately, that hurts her. She is so afraid to be seen as anything but a progressive. She doesn't wanna be seen as a moderate. I think she is a moderate, and it's not an insult.
Yeah, policy-wise, probably, yeah.
And so there are decisions that she has made over the last year that I've been very disappointed in, because unlike Dan Ryan, unlike Keith Wilson, unlike Eric Zimmerman, or Olivia Clark, or anybody who just stands inside exactly who they are, I'll give Loretta Smith this credit, right? Somebody who's like, no, you're not gonna accuse me of having views I don't have, or whatever. I, I know who I am. And Julia, I
Yeah.
She's, she's just not a fighter. I don't know. I'm worried she's not a fighter.
Something about that, yeah, it just doesn't seem like chair is a real
She's a
Fit.
Yeah, she's a lovely woman, but I just don't, I am, I have been disappointed by her inability to just square off and just do the thing.
Yeah.
Um, that indexing, taxing taxes at preschool for all things, that was a good and progressive policy. And when people stood up and said, that's not progressive, it's conservative, she went, okay.
She's kind of caved, yeah.
Like, alright.
Yeah, and I'll say that, that will be a big issue next year. We'll, I'm like, just this big story about that, how there's, we have this issue in, in this region where we create, the, our accountants or whatever, create these things where we go, oh shit, we have like six hundred million dollars sitting in this thing that
Oops.
We didn't mean to accrue, and now we don't know what to do with it, and some people fight over it. It's one of my criticisms of Steve Novick, is that he will not tap into PSEF, it seems like. Uh, but, but yeah, that'll be a big thing next year. Uh, I wrote down the whole calling it anti-child DSA thing. I think they're gonna start maybe doing this with the election, but I know that that's a party platform thing of like, they really wanna have this notion of like, broken families are healthy almost, like, um, and I'm saying that as somebody grew up with a single mom.
Dismantle the family.
Um, that's just kind of a forecast thing that they may start doing next year. Um, I'm trying to think of other stuff to, to cover, but were you gonna say something?
Oh, I think, I think I would look to weird stuff that they may try to do in the next year. Um, I'd look to the environmental stuff. So they've just proven time and time again that they're willing to get us sued by companies, right? The way that they've gone after individual companies, individual land use agreements, and like, they're, they're very
Spent so much time just on the Zenith thing.
Yeah, this is Zenith is a great example. They, they keep doing stuff that's gonna give Zenith grounds to sue us, because if you treat one contract different than all the other contracts, because you hate the company that has the contract, that's, gets ground, you're asking for a lawsuit. Uh, I think, you know, the, the ICE center land use thing is a little tricky there too, but I would look at, um, I would look at the policy positions of some of these national, um, environmental groups. I'd look to, I mean, I've heard rumors of further fights with PGE and Northwest Natural. I've heard rumors of, um, gas appliance fees on the horizon, really stupid ideas, like, really, really stupid ideas.
Yeah, and a lot of these are kind of, not the PGE side, but a lot of these are like, they've been tried before.
Tried, and they're very popular with certain environmental groups, but they do tend to bludgeon working-class people. They tend to, again, stack fees and taxes on top of fees and taxes.
Yeah. The other thing I was gonna say too, and I told you this, I don't know, a while back, is I think, and this is my optimistic view of twenty twenty six, in November, I think that, yeah, there's just a lot going on in Oregon. There's a ton of ballot stuff that's gonna be on there, so I hope people are more activated to vote, but, um, I also think that the DSA, since we got this kind of early preview, you know, they'll, they'll have been there for two years.
Yep.
These ones that are up for reelection.
Yep.
And then we'll also have a year of New York and seeing how their mayor's doing there. And so I think that that might give people some insight as to like,
Yeah.
We've got about three years of seeing how this, like, again, partisan organization is injecting themselves into local politics.
Um, I think you're right, so yeah.
But that'll be like a three-year kind of preview of like, do you trust that? Do you wanna keep going down this path or not, as Portlanders?
I think you're right, yeah. They're, they're gonna have to run on their records. They're gonna have to run on Keith Wilson's record, and then a little bit, they're gonna have to run on Zoran Mobdani's record. Because you're gonna be able to see that he's not gonna accomplish all of the things that he set out to accomplish. He's already filling his, like, cabinet with insane people.
Um, and arguably, Portland has been doing that same shit before he's even, you know, been in the picture, so.
But it is all part of a national agenda.
Yeah.
Um,
It definitely is, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not about Portland. It's about a broader plan. Uh, not a conspiracy, just a, just a party platform. Like, like you're saying, it's just not nonpartisan. It, it is, it is a broader national agenda to, to increase the amount of, like, socialist policies. Uh, and, and change the face of the American left to this new form, which I just, we gotta relearn a lot of, a lot of lessons over and over again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's
Yeah, and I don't know, it's, I don't wanna talk about the New York stuff too much, but I think a lot of these times, even here with the DSA members, it's a lot of just, um, people that look physically like good candidates, and that's purely what people are voting on, a lot of the time. I know a lot of the time is just, you know, anti-capitalist stuff too, but, um, I just think that, uh, yeah, it's gonna be kind of a proving grounds, at least for some of these counselors here.
Yeah.
And I, and, and yeah, I didn't even think about the stuff you said earlier about, I think a lot of people will be real divided as to
Yeah.
The mayor stuff of like, uh, am I with Keith? And I think he's probably got still a large majority of people who are
Yeah.
Supporting what he's doing, so.
Well, and I think, uh, yeah, I, I said something in one of my latest pieces, which offended Well, and I think, uh, you, I, I said something in one of my latest pieces which offended people and I, I, maybe I should have been more clear. I talked about the, the, uh, uh, middle-aged white women of privilege parade.
Oh, sure.
Showed up to testify. And, and by that, I think some, some people took it as like, oh, Max says a thing against middle-aged white women. No, no, I mean very specifically the women who can't seem to testify in front of city council without introducing themselves. It's like. Hi, I'm Sue Jones, a white woman living on stolen land. I live with the privilege of, like, th- these women. Um, and, and their husbands, but, but there's an awful lot of these sort of Sarah Fisher types, right?
Yeah.
Uh, they testify, they endorse candidates like Angelita Mario. And I think there, we need to figure out how many of them there are because that's, that's the clincher. These are the type of people who vote for Azor on Mamdani. Or they vote for an Angelita Mario, not even necessarily because they think that they can pull off any of the things that they're selling.
Right.
It's just that they want to be the kind of person who lives in the kind of city who would elect the kind of politician who would try. To get rid of the police. They don't think it's gonna work. It's just like in there, because they are fairly privileged. They actually are fairly privileged. They have luxury beliefs. They are not directly impacted by electricity and gas rates continuing to go up. Or they can brush it away as that's definitely just a corporation gouging. It's not that, like. Local environmental groups have access to a fund to sue the energy companies that directly affect rate, like.
Yeah.
They don't.
No, it's, yeah. It's a good point, yeah.
They just wanna live in the kind of city that sues major corporations all the time. And, and then they're like, oh damn, a food desert. That must just be because of capitalism.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say, yeah, it's a lot, it's like, too, I always call it feel-goodism, but it comes from a place of compassion, but it, it's like a lot of those folks. I wish they would, yeah, look at the results more and look outside of their neighborhood a little bit more, cause yeah, like I agree, a lot of these people are. You know, fairly wealthy folks and they don't experience a lot of the problems that are happening in Portland.
They're pretty insulated.
And, yeah, it's like, I don't know, it's a hard thing to just get people to like, look into that every time there's a local election. Because it is just a lot of optics and like, voting on emotion and compassion and, um.
The last time I went on Kristen's podcast, I like walked through her neighborhood after the episode and her neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
Just like their yard signs are insane. These are the cushiest. Like, I'm sure they're lovely people, but their neighborhood is like. I walked past that little school and there's like bikes locked up with cable locks, not even through the wheels. On a Saturday and that bike is still gonna be there when that kid is done playing. And, and I love that for that kid. I wanna live in a city where you can just still lock it, but I don't live in that part of the city. Like, that's wild, but these are the people that are like, I love Tiffany Koyama Lane.
When I think one of the, yeah, lessons I hope those people can over time learn or learn already is that, you know. A lot of those folks that they end up voting for out of compassion or just feel-goodism or anti-capitalism or whatever. Are actually the ones that get like this big dark money and they're kind of like the smoky back rooms people that Angelita talks about a lot. That's who they are. And that's why they have this playbook of like, well, they're coming after us because we're the minority block. And it's like, no, you fucking aren't.
No, you are.
You guys are the biggest block because you get all this union money, dark money.
Christmas tree lighting ceremony was last night. Tiffany Koyama Lane and Candace Avalos were there. Candace Avalos is in her, almost, I think probably mandated by her employers, uh, local progress beanie.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Local progress, working families party.
Super dark money stuff, yeah. And, and, yeah, I just, I'd really try to get that across to people that they're, it's, it, they try to sell this idea that. Hey, the status quo is out to destroy us. You guys are the status quo now. And you have been the status quo arguably since. Join Hardisty days is where a lot of these guys come from.
Yeah.
And it's just like, they've been in, they've been in and ma- been maintaining power for a long time, so.
Big machines backing these people. Yes, big, big, big machines.
So that's something to consider, you know, when the election comes up, like, uh, these guys are not. Powerless folks that are working class and grassroots, like they're quite the opposite.
This is astroturfed.
Something that.
Very astroturfed.
You and I talk about all the time, so. Um, yeah, is there anything else you wanna squeeze in here? We're getting close to three hour-ish, we're probably more at two twenty mark, but, uh.
Okay.
Probably five or ten minutes if you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna talk about, you wanna, you wanna talk about Dan Ryan's internet flub? Did you follow any of this?
The, are you talking about the, him and Angelita?
Yeah, his, the, the little battle they got into.
Yeah, we can talk about it, yeah.
Damn, I, I just.
I know about it and, and, you know, the one thing that I'll say is, and I don't give a fuck about if people will challenge this or be upset about this. But I have done that before, like, did what he did.
Yeah.
Cause I think they are a national party that represents socialism, so.
Okay, so, so through here.
I didn't spell this out and say that you guys are this, but, you know.
Well, so, so, yeah, I mean, Dan Ryan is a lovely grandpa on the internet sometimes. He's just a love, like, he's, yeah, so.
He's not the most tech savvy guy.
He's not the most tech savvy guy, you know, and this is Portland, Oregon, which is not the most tech savvy city.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Um, so he made a criticism of Angelita Mario's, um. AI price fixing ban because that AI price fixing ban is part of a national platform. That is not an Angelita Mario original idea. That is part of this.
It's been done before.
DSA local progress, exactly. This is, this is the national platform. And so he referred to it as part of a national. Socialist agenda, which it objectively is, but national socialism is Nazis. That was a flub on his part. Obviously, he did not mean to accuse him of being Nazis, but being the ridiculous crybullies that they are. They, you know, and by they, I very specifically mean Angelita Mario, Mitch Green. Candace Avalos flew to social media and started screaming about it.
Yeah.
Clearly, that's not what Dan meant. But, yeah, his original point stands. He didn't apologize, by the way, which I really.
Yeah, and I, I think it's like, I don't know, to me, it's just like, you can call it what it is and that is what it is. And you can have nuance enough to know that that's different from, you know, a thing in the nineteen forties that we're talking about.
What, how, how the sentence should have been structured is this is part of a national agenda. This is a socialist platform that comes down from national organizers. It is not written in Portland. It is not written for Portlanders.
Not local policies.
It's not local policy. This is a national policy being handed down by political parties is exactly what, it's what he should have said. It's what he changed it to saying, whatever. I was proud of him. He didn't apologize. That was good. It was a good moment.
Yeah.
Don't apologize for stuff you didn't do. This was a little bit of a Keith Wilson moment. Keith Wilson's getting screamed at for being a monster and killing everybody's neighbors. Keith Wilson knows that he's not killing anybody's neighbors. So what he doesn't do is issue an apology for killing neighbors who didn't die, right? This is, there's gotta be a body, right? This is good. This was a great moment, but I think it showed, that what I wanted to highlight is that when he gave his non-apology. Which was not an apology, nor was it meant to be. Angelita and Candace flipped out at him. I didn't hear an apology in there.
Right, yeah.
Then they did this shit where they said, and kinda we would never, I just think it's time for some decorum on this council. The idea that you go on social media and attack your colleagues is so beyond. We would never. And I was cackling watching this because this, this is their whole, this is their whole brand.
It's like what they've done every week of the year.
Every week of the year. It is phenomenal to watch this, like, it reminds me of the kid in elementary school. Who's flicking rubber bands against the back of your head until you finally turn around and go, will you knock it off? The teacher looks up and the kid who's been firing the rubber bands is like, Andy's yelling at me for some reason. This is exactly the energy.
Like, you're the problem, not me.
And I wanna make sure next year that Portlanders know that that's who's running for city council is the kid in the back of the room with the rubber bands.
Right, yeah.
Pretending to be a victim the moment they get called out on their crap. Um, yeah, but it is a national agenda. It is astroturfed.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And also, yeah, I would say anyone talking about decorum, these are the guys that we talked about the whole, you know, they're constantly fighting on social media, insulting people. Insulting constituents, I mean, ejecting constituents from their press conference. There's, it just goes on and on and like. There, if you wanna talk about decorum, these guys are the bottom of the barrel as far as.
Angelita mocked a neighbor of mine for writing too many op-eds.
Yeah.
She literally called her out by name, linked to all of the op-eds that she had written and made fun of her for this. You're allowed to write op-eds. As like a resident in a city, you're allowed to write into your local paper and share your opinion. In fact, I would encourage more people to do it and I'm sure the Oregon, uh, Oregonian editorial board would love more and more varied op-eds written in. Um, this is the kind of people they are. They mock Portland residents who didn't vote for them. And then the moment that Dan Ryan accidentally says a thing that might be an implied insult.
Right.
This council is outrageous.
And it always becomes a kind of a hyper-focus on identity. They're attacking me because of my immutable characteristics, which is ridiculous, cause that's what they do on the. Partisan like kind of side of things is discriminate based on those same classes, their constituents, but, uh. But yeah, I was gonna mention real quick before we wrap it up. I, I did wanna mention that, that, to me, that's been a big theme twenty twenty-five for the Peacock group is just. Um, not wanting all voices to be heard, whether that's testimony or like op-eds, like you just said, or, um. There are just so many examples, yeah, the press conference thing, um, and it's just wild to me, like, I've never seen such a level of that of like. Even if some of these people are in my district, I don't care. I don't wanna hear from them. I don't even wanna allow them to be heard or speak.
They're just shills for.
Um, so I just noticed as a theme and like, if you see that happen, if you see that behavior in your district or wherever in Portland. That's not supposed to be part of our municipal system here. It's not supposed to be any part of government. Uh, the whole point is so that everyone can have a voice. That's why we use these equity and all these words all the time. And so I just wanna point that out that there's a real theme with the Peacock group of shutting out. People they don't wanna hear from, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But yeah, alright, I think, uh, I'm really hoping this camera's still going, cause this, this one stopped like ten, five minutes ago or something, but yeah. Thanks for joining us, guys. Well, you know, we'll do more of these, uh, as usual and, uh, check out Max's Substack as, as usual, subscribe to that.
And recalibrate Portland.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, we'll see you again next time. Max, thanks for coming, dude.
Awesome, yeah, always.